I noticed that. Eight acres and some of the.
I think well changed. I noticed that.
I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, October 16th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Eric, shall we take role?
Mary LaKine.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kate.
Here.
Councilmember Romanelle.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Temple.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Piorito.
Here.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody on the council that has any disclosures to the disclosing topics of interest?
Can I say none?
Or do we have? Agenda, a consent agenda? Any modifications to the agenda?
Do you have any? We fill the supplement under the 416. I don't see them. She's seeing that we're in a second page. You know, if you wish, we can help the music, so we can have the table.
We can discuss it.
If we cable it, then there could be no vote. So given that ballots were set up today, we should discuss it. And if we don't want to vote on it, you can not vote on it.
Okay.
Okay.
You were right, that should be C.
To get into that red zone there, they have, they have really struggled.
Okay, so we've modified the third resolution under seven to seven C. Is there any other modifications? Okay, then. I'll look for motion.
Making motions to accept the agenda with the change as as stated.
Second.
Got motion in the second. Ms. Eric.
Mayor Pro Tem Kate.
Yes.
Councilmember Temple.
Yes.
Mary LaKine.
Yes.
Councilmember Piorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanelle.
Yes.
Okay. Agenda has zero. First, we have presentation. We have Michelle Lars. To give a presentation on the store. Sort down on that way finding streets and get these concepts. Is Michelle.
Hello, my name is Michelle Lars. I am a master of landscape architecture student at the University of Colorado Denver. I work for the university technical assistance program, which is funded by Gopa.
Mary LaKine, or Reverend, we've got several people online says they cannot hear us. Can you check that?
Okay, we'll stand by. Technical. Look see what's going on. Technology.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Will, can you, can you hear me, Will? Can you hear me in the headset?
You said there, him and Chad Smith both said there's a tremendous echo. Echo.
Yep.
And then Erica said she can't hear at all. It's like three people.
Yeah.
Chad, can you hear now?
Testing.
You said that goes gone now.
You can hear now.
Yep. Mr. Cole, can you hear us? Okay.
I can. I was getting an echo before earlier, but it seems to be gone now.
No, he's, he took himself off mute. I can't, we can't hear Mr. Cole now.
Yeah, I set up to work.
He should be a presenter. He's our attorney. Can you elevate him, please?
Can you hear me now?
Bob, you're gonna need to unmute on your side. I'm trying to unmute you. I'm unmuting you as a participant, but you're still muted. On your end.
He, he was unmuted. You just.
I'm muted now.
But he's, is he a participant or a present presenter?
He's a presenter.
Can you, can you hear me now?
I, I'm showing him it's muted right now. But I'm afraid to touch, touch it because.
I'm on a.
He just dropped off. He's probably gonna relog in.
Yeah. Okay, is Erica a presenter?
Yes, she is.
Erica, can you hear us? Or Chief Reagan, can you unmute and speak to us remotely?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
It lit up, but it didn't.
Yeah, we're not hearing anybody. We're not hearing participants.
And you're gonna see the confusion.
Hello, can you hear me?
Two guys, Dirk and James. Stevie Lamb, nobody gonna tell.
No, I can hear individuals. I can hear.
Let's do that.
I, I can hear her person best.
Is the volume turned up on the speakers in here? Cause we're not hearing.
I, I don't know where that's at. I, I would say we continue on with the presentation. I will try to find out why. Because I'm talking right now and I can hear, I don't know why the speaker is off.
Okay, we will continue since the people online can now hear us. We, we just won't have to hear them tonight, I guess, if they have something to say.
Would you like me to introduce myself again?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Hello, my name is Michelle Lazarz. I am a student at the University of Colorado Denver in the Masters of Landscape Architecture Program. I work for the university technical assistance program, which is funded by the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, which made all of this work possible today. I will be presenting the historic downtown monument, wayfinding and streetscape redesign proposals in the form of our final report. So if we can move over to the next slide, please. We'll jump ahead a couple. We can keep going.
Mr. Mayor, are you able to hear me now?
Well, while that's getting up, I can just talk a little bit about the project itself. So some of our initial role in this was to kind of help design, design some additional wayfinding signage throughout town and help direct traffic from I-25 into the historic downtown corridor. So through that, we started out by looking at wayfinding signage and incorporated streetscape design as part of that, and also discussed potentially rebranding from historic downtown monument, which ultimately decided to stay as historic downtown monument. If we could go ahead to slide seven. So this map here shows the project area that we've been focusing on. This is Second Street between Beacon Light Road and Front Street. And continue on. We started out by kind of mapping out all of the existing wayfind, wayfinding signage throughout this corridor and ultimately developed this map that you see in front of you that shows locations where you could update existing signage or potentially add additional signage to help increase wayfinding. And the next slide. We also then looked at mapping the streetscape itself. At the time that we started this project, there were currently 66 parallel parking spaces on that streetway. That was restriped throughout the duration of this project and now was maxed out at 98 parallel parking spaces with dedicated bike lanes separating parking from the two driving lanes. This helped ease parking concerns, but also created some greater safety issues for pedestrians and cyclists with limited sightlines. So those were things that we kind of looked at considering in our designs. Next slide, please. So we started out with some initial design packages. A few of the kind of best practices that we tried to include throughout this process and improve on as we go forward. We're using simple and easy to read fonts and appropriate sizes and color contrast, the use of icons and imagery, incorporation of Braille or tactile maps, as well as auditory cues and signals at streetlights with haptic feedback. You could also look at including RFID torches and digital wayfinding technology for those with visual impairments and including changes in the texture of the ground surface and hardscape as a visual and tactile cue that you're entering a different type of zone, such as a crosswalk or a seating area. So here we just see a few of the initial design schemes for wayfinding signage. We can go forward again. And there's a few more here. So these were the initial concepts that were presented to the residents of the town. Can continue forward, please. And moving forward again. And so we also looked at potentially identifying ways to help drive traffic off of I-25 through CDOT's tourism oriented directional signage program. So just kind of identifying some potential places to kind of direct traffic that way. If we can move forward too, please. And then we started just the initial conversation with some very basic preliminary concepts of how we could look at that same streetscape width. So we started by measuring a few specific cross-sections of the street along Second Street and proposed three initial alternatives, including a variety of schemes with either one-way or two-way traffic, parking on-street, off-street, angled parking, just exploring some different things to start a conversation going. And if you want to scroll ahead, we also produced a 3D fly-through video of these three iterations to kind of demonstrate what they would look like in real time. And moving forward. So then we hosted a survey. This was done between November 2nd and November 30th, the 2022, collected just under 350 responses from local residents entirely. 8.8% were from business owners in the historic downtown monument area, and 96% of people were aware of the historic area. So very good feedback there. We also included a lot of open-ended comments on all of the signage proposals and streetscape proposals as well. We did end up eliminating two of the wayfinding signage schemes based on the feedback here and kind of revisiting some of those streetscapes. We can move forward, please. And we could go ahead again. So after that, we kind of took that feedback, started working on reiterating some of these designs. Go forward again, please. So introduced a fourth design scheme, adding protected bike lanes and a street planter swale in the middle of the street, also including two-way traffic, but we're moving on-street traffic, on-street parking, excuse me, altogether relying on off-street parking lots. So then we kind of went back through. If you could go ahead. We did a series of public meetings throughout this process with both internal stakeholders, downtown merchants association, and the general public. Moving forward, please. And again. And then we hosted a second survey. This one was run through June 8th to July 10th of this year, and we received 64 complete responses. This survey really looked at narrowing in a little bit more on the design schemes that we proposed. These were three updated signage packages from the initial feedback and two additional streetscape proposals. So there was a clear favorite being option three, which I'll show here in a second, received 50% of the votes, and then people generally preferred the two-way traffic streetscape design. If we could go forward. We also looked at color options as far as branding for the town and potentially using multiple colors of signage to represent different things, which is giving people more options to make each signage package palatable, palatable. Moving forward. So I'll just run through these briefly. These were the updated signage packages, kind of in a little bit more detail as far as rough size, scale, colors, and fonts chosen. This one received 19% of the votes. Moving forward. And again, please. The second option received 33, sorry, 30.5% of the votes. And we can go ahead. And then option three, if you'll scroll to the next page, please. Oh, sorry, two more. This one received 50% of the votes. Overall, this did have the most support from the community, but also the widest variety of options as far as the color for this. People tended to like the natural stone materiality, the kind of lighted way, wayfinding signage through the downtown corridor, but also felt that this might not be quite as kind of artsy and fit in with the community itself. So other things to consider moving forward. If we could go ahead, please. This one also included some kind of untraditional signage options, like incorporating exercise stations throughout or bike racks attached to signs. Let's scroll ahead. This one also, one of the comments from the survey was that this gateway was a little bit less inspired than some of the other options. So it may be something worth considering, revisioning this a little bit more, kind of combining some of the schemes together. We can go ahead. And then as far as the streetscape proposals, this option received 19 votes. Both of the two that we presented were fairly similar. It was essentially a difference between one-way and two-way traffic, both with parallel parking on both sides, much widened sidewalks. This option here showed sidewalks that range between 12 to 22 feet wide, allowing for additional space for vendors and business owners to kind of spill out onto the curb or allow outdoor dining in additional spaces, but also addressing some of the ADA concerns with people being able to pass each other in wheelchairs. And if we can go to the next one.
Hold on one second, please. Are you sharing your desktop?
I was, I was unable to get it going and be able to move it around. I will.
The people on, people online can't see the presentation.
Post the presentation tomorrow. I wasn't able to get it up and running.
We are gonna have more things today that need to be shared with the public. Okay.
Okay, that's all. So this just shows the, that initial concept kind of just zoomed in a little bit. So again, parking on both sides of the street, we can keep going. This next one was again, two-way traffic on the street, parking on the street. The sidewalks are just slightly more narrow, ranging from nine and a half feet to 20 and a half feet, but still very significant. And both of these schemes incurreded, included curb bulb outs to kind of provide some additional buffer for those sightlines when people are pulling out at intersections to protect cyclists and pedestrians crossing the street. We can go ahead. And again, just another zoom in of what that could essentially look like. Again, the main difference here is just one-way versus two-way traffic. And moving forward. So lastly, we did receive some additional feedback. One of the major things that had come up throughout this process was whether or not to include bike lanes on Second Street or shift them over to residential streets nearby. That was initially tabled from the first set of public meetings and survey, but it did come up again a lot in the results from the second survey. So it may be something worth considering, re-adding those bike lanes back into whatever scheme you do end up building. But ultimately, these are all still initial concept designs. We would highly recommend a detailed survey of the streetscape as well as reviewing utilities, municipal code requirements, and ADA standards specific to construction on a block-by-block segment of Second Street. And if we can go to the next slide, we have prepared some initial preliminary opinions of cost. Very tiny numbers here. I'll give you the ballpark. Essentially, they break down one-way streetscape versus a two-way streetscape. There's not a whole lot of difference in the numbers here, both ranging right around 2.5 million for these proposals. This includes everything as far as like asphalt removal for expanding sidewalks and concrete repair, trash and recycle bins, benches, all of those kinds of things, as well as Xeric low-water planters for the streetscape as well. And then go to the next one. So then this one shows some very preliminary numbers for the wayfinding signage packages, both option one, two, and three. These all show a quantity of one of each type of sign and are very preliminary numbers that can't be used for construction due to the final needs of dimensioning and materiality that you end up choosing. So these are just to give kind of a rough ballpark of what that might look like. And the next slide, please. And lastly, we included a slide on some additional sustainability opportunities that can make this a more attractive project in terms of attracting grant funding. So these could be things like including EV charging stations, additional bike lanes and bike racks on the streetscape, as well as including street tree planters that can help with stormwater infiltration, native plants that use low water and help provide some cooling atmospheric effects for the streetscape, as well as trees, carbon capture, things like that, and then also including solar-powered lights in wayfinding signage to reduce your electricity needs while still increasing the safety aspect on the streetscape. And with that, I will open up to questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I'm glad we got to see the presentation. Just curious, was your computer unable to connect to Teams?
Yes, I was not able to get in as a presenter.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the council about the presentation and what they've been doing? I'm sure Madeline can also answer questions as well.
Great presentation. Thank you very much. That was, is really fascinating to look at and to listen to all the, the work that's gone behind it. Was there any discussion or, or look at using roundabouts instead of stop signs?
We did not particularly go into that typically just because of the amount of space that you need for a roundabout. I, I do still think it's something that could be considered. I'm just personally not a traffic engineer. It's a little beyond my personal scope. But yeah, if you have somebody that's involved in that realm and could help provide some, some look at, you know, the actual dimensioning of this area, I think it's something that could be considered. And it did, I think, come up in a few of the survey results throughout. Yeah, thanks.
Yes, please come up so we can, so we can hear you.
I'm, I'm Jeffrey Wood, and I'm a technical supervisor for the program that Michelle works for. The, to, to address your need, the impact, since you have trucks that go down the street, it needed, it was gonna be like a, we were gonna be chopping away corners of buildings. And it was, I mean, I think there's probably some, we looked at it at the, out at Second Street where it hits the, the, before you head down to, to, yeah, yeah, there, there's places you could do it. I don't think in the downtown core it would help you. Okay, I think it would cause a lot of problems, but, but I think it's, there is applicable in certain places.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Maybe a tunnel?
I'll bring up one. So downtown, and I live west of the track, so I'm through there all the time, and we consistently run out of parking. And it seems like to me, the only way to achieve that without having designated parking lots is to do one-way streets with more perpendicular type parking. And then I understand that a lot of people didn't like that idea. But how many extra spaces do you think we would grab by doing that?
Um, I realistically couldn't give a good number off the top of my head. If you were to do perpendicular parking, just because it would cut into a lot of the sidewalk expansion. One thing that we did look at a while back was like angled parking.
Well, angled is more what I'm thinking, right, right?
Yeah. That option did seem to add a decent amount of spaces, but even looking at the two-way hybrid scheme that they, was like most voted on in the second survey, that one does give you the option to add up to 12 additional parking spaces and parallel parking.
Okay, so we only get, gain 12 that way, but I'd be curious, is it like, will we gain like 30% more spaces?
I. Yeah, it, it wasn't a significantly bigger number, but it was more than 12 for sure.
Yeah.
I can, I can go back.
I know it was part of this when we originally started and we had had those discussions, but it's just, you know, with the, with the event center and La Casa down there, I mean, that area just gets packed on the weekends. And trying to find extra places to park is difficult.
Yeah, I do remember one citizen also brought up the idea of a parking structure off-street, which is very costly.
Right, right.
But could also be an alternative to, to look at as well.
Could also be considered somewhat of an eyesore.
Right.
For. Yeah.
It can also be a monetary opportunity to, you know, make some additional funds to offset the costs of the parking structure. But I have seen some parking structures that ended up being really beautiful if you incorporate public art as part of that design, so.
So if we got 26 extra spaces by doing angled parking, we would also gain on Third Street. So maybe there's another 20 up there?
Potentially. I did not look at parking on Third Street.
Yeah, the one way, the one way would go, would go west on Second and north on Front, and then east on Third Street.
Yeah, I, I had brought that up in, when I sat with you in that demo and it doesn't seem that the public, though, had the stomach for all one ways.
That was one of the most consistent responses from all of our public meetings and surveys was the very clear division between support for and against one-way streets. So, yeah.
All right, we'll iron that one out later. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have one question. I went to your previous meetings and I've seen this kind of evolve. And thank you for your, all your hard work. Are you guys gonna have, and I guess I'm just surprised that the low amount of people that filled out the surveys, I would think, and that's no fault of your own, because you put it out there. But are you guys planning on having another survey to like round up everything or?
We are personally not. This is kind of the final report that we hand off to you.
Okay.
I, I think it's still something that you could do a third survey and, and kind of finalize some of the plans, maybe looking a little bit more in detail at what people have kind of selected from there and kind of hone in on a more of like a singular version for each thing.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you. It's been fun.
So Madeline, with this sort of wrapping up, and to council member Abbott's point, the, the cost to implement this is gonna be through grant writing, I'm assuming, to some extent?
Really, it'd be kind of up to the direction of council, what our next steps are. Michelle's presentation and the study is great, but we would have to hire an engineering firm to actually do this work for us. So that would be in addition to the cost that she has given you in the report. So we could look at grant funding for that. We could start looking at what funds might be available and move forward with that project if that's the will of the council.
Did you have a timeframe in mind when you wanted to start working on this? Was this a, are you wrapped up and done so, so far and something we could bring up in the first of the year?
I.
Or do you want to continue moving between now and the end of the year on this?
I don't have a, a timeline in mind. I don't have a timeline in mind. This was kind of just, well, it just started off as the wayfinding study because we needed to do that, this kind of work in order to apply for grant funding. The streetscape came after a lot of public meetings when there was a lot of people that wanted to talk about that. So we didn't really have a plan for this at all. This was definitely a long-term project. So we would have to talk with our Public Works and our Planning Department and see if this would be something we could move forward with, and then the Town Manager and Council.
Okay, so why don't we just, I mean, if the council is good with this, we let the staff have their internal meetings and then they can come back to us possibly at the beginning of the year, first quarter. I mean, is that enough time for you guys to?
You gotta remember, we're going to start on a comp plan next year also. And I think probably this comp plan will allow us to have a lot more public input on this. And so I think that's a good opportunity for us to bring that back to council.
Would, would this study then help inform as well as the research on the grants, the con plan is what your thought process is?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking is that we could work on those together because you gotta remember the comp plan is going to have a parks piece to it. And then we're going to do a parks master plan in the future. Also, we're looking at a downtown master plan, looking at something like that. And so I think this is just the beginning and we'll update you as we go.
Okay.
Um, thank you. You guys were absolutely terrific. And I'm just wondering if, do you have any plans for any other projects working with the Town of Monument? Couldn't help it, Jeff, sorry.
And I turned this one over to Jeff.
We're working on an adult activities center.
You are?
For the Town of Monument. And of course, we love working with you guys. It's a spirited resident base. I did want to comment on your, on what you said about the number of people that participated. For better or worse, those are good numbers. It's, 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 I mean, I understand you'd like everybody to participate, but we, we looked at the, we looked at the monument survey and went, all right. We were happy because like, that's a lot of participation. We, and over the months that we've been working on this project, I, we don't have a head count, but I'm going to say it's several hundred people, maybe duplicate people at times, but a lot of people participated in that, in that process. I also wanted to make one bit of, throw a little tiny bit of cold water and then some good water. First of all, one of the things that came out of our initial meetings with the business district, your sidewalks do not meet ADA compliance in any way, shape, or form. That, that is out there as a real problem at some point. And our getting in front of this was a matter of, you know, we're going to have to be thinking of something to do here to address ADA compliance in our sidewalks. And as we do it, how are we, how should we adjust the lanes? How should we, because we're going to need to steal footage in the width of the road. Hence, that was a driver. And it remains out there as a huge situation. No doubt about it. And finally, the Madeline's point, you can get a tier-one grant from DOLA almost for asking. Don't quote me. This isn't, this isn't going out anywhere, right?
Apparently not. No one can hear.
I'm, I'm the one that did that. No, but you could get a tier-one grant to get professional services almost for asking. We dovetail very well with that. We're happy to hand over all of our finding-sitting professional outfit that wants to come in and do the actual traffic survey and stuff like that, which should be done and really kind of figure that stuff out. I believe somebody mentioned the wisdom of one-way streets all throughout. I'm going to stop talking now, I'm sorry. But one-way streets will will solve a lot of problems. And maybe people will be angry right at first, but they will get used to it. So I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. And that was a softball preset-up question, if I've ever seen one. Okay, well, thank you again. Yep, we will move on to 4B Monument Traffic Study Plan, Commander Lepton.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is John Lepton. I'm
Hang on one second, Mr. Lepton. Are we going to be, are you presenting anything?
I've got it on the screen for you, sir, I believe.
You're sharing your email or your team's chat. There, thank you. Nope.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
So I'm actually going to start with this one.
You just?
No, I'm going to the rights thing. We were directed to start looking at a traffic study plan. What we can tell you is in a meeting with our Public Works Department and also with Planning Director Croner can give you where we have on that. What I'm giving you is the background of how we take complaints so that the council is aware of when traffic complaints, any of these things come in, those kinds of things and how they're handled internally. So what ends up happening? If you're looking at the screen, we simply show our violations and complaints actually go to the request complaint tracker online. And that goes through the front side of our Town of Monument. We have where we ask people to file their complaints either by calling the dispatch center so that they are followed through El Paso County Dispatch at the 390-5555 to call it in, or for non-emergency or code-type complaints to follow the process that the town has already put in place. And that goes to this request tracker. I'm showing you real quick that that code violation concerns you log into the system and you literally put them right into the complaint software that's online. That sends us a task, tasking for tracking. I show, I'm showing you an example of what that does now through, I've taken care of some of that for you, where you can see our task tracker through an Excel spreadsheet of where we track those items as they come in to make sure they're being handled, that they did come to some kind of a conclusion so that everyone knows that we do follow up on those complaints and that there is a process internally. So as the Town Council members, when people are reaching out to you and saying, what do we do about any of these violations, I'll tell you, I just showed you very quickly the way they could do that by either calling dispatch or going to the software online. With that in mind, we wanted to come back with that Monument Police Department themselves augments the Town of Monument with statistical data based on the three Cs. So we talked to crash locations, citations, and complaints. This data is used in our development or our deployment strategies and helps our officers in identifying areas to target for violations that are most associated with dangerous driving actions. This is not a traffic study that's done by Public Works or in partnership with our Planning Department, but it is intelligence-led policing that we met with these directors to give input on. As you can see, we put that together so that you could see a snapshot from our statistical analysis that this data does drive many of the places and locations that we then target for enforcement and for visibility. So what we are showing on there is our top crash locations for the Town of Monument over the last two years. The citation data of the citations that we have written as officers for violations most commonly associated with crashes or dangerous driving behaviors. And then the bottom is the number of citizen traffic complaints received online and how many are investigated. So we do have different methods of receiving those right now. We are trying to get them streamlined so that people will either use the online tracking software, or they will call them into our dispatch, which then tracks their calls for service through El Paso County Dispatch. And that's how we get to the data that's there. But when it comes to a traffic study, that's dictated by Public Works or the Planning Department and Director Croner can speak to that. When it comes back to the method of uniform traffic control devices is very set by the state of Colorado when traffic engineers. So to change signing or anything like that, people can give us the complaints, their concerns. We do write them down. We add them to the database to talk to our Planning Department and our Public Works when they come up. And somebody wants a stop sign somewhere, somebody wants us to look at roundabouts somewhere, we add that information and give them that data. But as a law enforcement agency, all we're doing is putting wet stuff on the hot stuff like firemen where we are going to the positions and places that we see the most problems, the highest crash problems, and the highest speeding violations. So Director Croner can speak to any of that, but I'm open for questions on anything that the council or the mayor might have.
Mr. Kimpel, is this, is this the kind of, are you looking for more data than this? Or is this a good start? Because this was brought up at your, your request originally.
It's a good starting point. Some of the information's there that, that I was asking for, was also asking, you know, as the community is being built out, especially on the east side, the to be honest, you know, I, before I was elected into this seat, I had been coming to the, to the Board of Trustees about speeding problems and what solutions could be made. And I heard everything from it's up to the residents to do the right thing. We don't have enough police. We don't have the money for the police. They don't have the time to be at the different locations because I see 633 speeding tickets were, or citations were given in a two-year period. And what it doesn't say is where those tickets, where, where is the, where are the tickets given? Where's, where's the bulk of the tickets given? I know that, you know, we, I requested Tribe V to do a study on Baptist Road itself where there's nine school bus stops and four, I'm sorry, Gleneagle, thank you, and four blind spots within those nine bus stops. I've personally almost been hit four times just crossing the street while I'm walking the dogs. And I see on a daily basis elderly trying to exercise, kids riding bikes. And most recent, most recently, I'll, my wife who's ahead of me walking the dog almost get hit. The car came within 15 feet. That's just on, you know, that's on Gleneagle. But when I walk on, because I, I walk pretty far, especially over like the weekends and different times throughout the day when I, when I'm not working. So I work on leather chaps going all the way from Baptist out past Bear Creek Elementary and back. And although they have stop signs at some of their intersections, I see them speeding in between those signs routinely. So that's, that's another dangerous area. Jackson Creek, I think somewhere down the road might resolve itself because the proposed seven stops or seven signal lights are proposed on Jackson Creek total. So that might slow down traffic, but traffic on there is pretty large volume of traffic going up and down Jackson Creek right now. So I'm also looking for potential solutions on how to help mitigate the speeding even on Old Denver. Old Denver doesn't have sidewalks. And there's kids coming out from the different housing areas trying to get up to the ballpark just to go to practice and/or to the ice rink. And cars are, are zipping by. And potentially, you know, someone's going to get hit. That's what I'm worried about. It's not if, it's when. Because of the volume of homes that we have here now and the people that are driving, that statistically speaking, it's just a matter of time. So what I'm looking to see is what can we do as a board to direct and help mitigate with recommendations from our police force from residents of what we can do to potentially help slow down the speeders and what other, what other measures we can take.
Thank you, Councilmember Kimpel. I had 27 years in the state troopers and retired as the troop captain over traffic enforcement for the Colorado State Patrol. So this is my area of expertise when it comes to the conversations on that. What we would tell you in return to that is that we concentrate on places where we find traffic crash problems. Speeding in itself is a violation that we do track and it is one of the many things. You're right, we have some, I can't give you a pin map right now of where those tickets were all written because of some of our very antiquated software, which you have helped us to fix with the installation of our new LERMs, our Law Enforcement Records Management System, is going to be able to do that for us, to be, give us real-life tracking, crime traffic, traffic trends, crash locations. So what we do with it, with the limited data we have, is we look to those locations where we have the highest incidences of crash locations where crashes occur. That does not necessarily mean that that's where our speeding problems are. You end up with the same problems on Interstate I-25 when I was a troop captain with the state troopers thereof. Where do you start to enforce it of, I have this many officers and this many people driving? So we were strategic in making sure that we were highly visible, that we did write a lot of either citations of warnings to be able to track some of that statistical data so that we could see where we were having the problems. But the beginning one is that we have to use where our highest crash locations are so that we know where we are needed the most to try and save lives and reduce damage. With that in mind, we also use our crime prevention through environmental design concepts. Whether that's going into roundabout design with traffic studies, whether we're doing speed bumps and speed mitigation, those kinds of concepts do come forward, but they always come at a price which comes with a traffic study on top of that of, is it legal? Is it a, do we have the authority to do it? And is it a city-owned road versus a county-owned road versus a state-owned road, which makes a lot of those changes. What we tell people, our officers, is to be very visible to make sure that we are enforcing the law and making sure that people, we are changing driving behaviors and our officers are left with that conversation of how do you think you're going to best gain compliance? Is it writing a ticket to everybody you have, or is it reminding people, hey, slow down, this is your neighborhood too? And we're trying to handle that at a way that we believe we're going to be able to be effective and still build in our community. So when it comes down to the things that you're asking about, Councilmember Kimpel, we are absolutely working on trying to get the data in place that you are asking about to see that it is objective data I can back, not subjective ideas of people who see it on their road. And they may very well see it on their road. What we are trying to do is be where we would have the biggest bang for the buck with the limited number of resources and officers we have with speed-detecting equipment and driving around finding other violations which are related to traffic crashes following too closely, careless driving, looking at their phones while driving, inattentive to driving, impaired driving, all of which are being mitigated by officers here with Monument PD. So my long-winded answer to that, sir, my short answer is we are working on it and it doesn't fall on deaf ears anytime anybody puts in these complaints. I want the public to have seen that. That's why I showed you the demographic of how many come in, that we handle them, we look into them, and we do do tracking and trend analysis to see if we have a problem location where we then deploy our resources through intelligence-led policing to make sure our officers are visible at the times, the hours, and the locations that we see the most of these problems, sir.
Well, you brought up a couple of things that, number one, I don't think our road design plan, I don't think the definition of our roads is not the same as what Colorado Springs or El Paso County has in their definition. Like what's a mine, you know, they use the terms minor, major collector, that kind of thing. I don't think, the last time I checked, and I could be wrong. We don't use that same, that same term, same definition, which I'm not sure why, when we take our information from either Springs or mainly El Paso County. But it does say in that 10 or 12-page booklet, I mean, I've been told that we can't use speed bumps because one, liability for POVs to come back on the town for damages. And number two, because of the snow removal, you know, but it does say in there about usage of mini roundabouts that that could be used. And I know that that's, that's cost, that's a cost measure. So, but I think that, I think that that should be explored. So, but I think that, I think that that should be explored as potential use to slow down some of, in the areas where they're speeding going on. But then I, my other question is, what about the use? And I know this is going to be a hot topic where a lot of people are not going to like it, but I'm going to ask, is using speed cameras?
All of those I believe would be planning and Public Works decisions and your law enforcement, the police will enforce what the town council and the ordinances in, instruct us to enforce or put into the law. We work hand in hand with them on some of those same issues. Everything you just said is the reason we don't have more places that have speed bumps. You're right about the snow removal and being able to remove a lot of those. And it does create a problem for liability when it came to damages. Same problems we had in the county when we were trying to find ways to calm traffic and the mini roundabouts were one of the solutions, but that always kind, came with expenses and costs. So what we're doing in the police department is giving you the data of what we have based on where we're writing tickets, how many we're writing, where we're having crashes, what our highest location crashes are and where people are complaining that we have these so that we are tracking these trending behaviors that we then share with Public Works and can share with our planning department for a prioritization list of what are the most dangerous locations and which locations need to be addressed most concerning for the whole community based on what the council decides that they would like to fund moving forward, sir.
Yeah, and Councilmember Kimpel, um, Public Works has ordered three speed counters and will be put, placing them out uh, in different areas of town, uh, checking on speeds and stuff like that and reporting that back to the police department. Yes.
So the electric, there's, there's two on Gleneagle right now. And I think one of them is in a bad spot. And that's at, that's at, uh, next to the train park going northbound.
Are those ours or are those Tribe's?
They're Tribe. And I talked to Mr. McGrady about having that moved up higher up where they're speeding on the incline and then they're speeding on the decline too, but moving the one to a better location. Because what residents are telling me is that, or that I've personally seen is that they're slowing down by that speed counter and as soon as they pass it.
Yep, they speed up.
Yeah, so.
I'll get, I'll get with him so that we can get that information and, and just get with you and see where you think's the best place to locate.
I'm wondering if, and this would be a something that we we need to research to see how much it costs and maybe put it in the, in the budget in either next year or future years is is, so we've got an accounting from the police state, from the police. It would be interesting to see the volume. So in other words, what's the traffic volume for, for roads? And I, I would pick like Jackson Creek, Leather Chaps, Old Denver, um, like two.
And that, that's what we're doing right now. Yep, that's exactly what we're doing. We're going to be counting volume at the same time. And we just, I think the, they just came in, so. And also I'd like to say thank you to the council and to previous councils of boards that have funded our police department the way you have because now we are fully staffed. We'll have plenty of police officers out there. We can't use that excuse anymore. Uh, that we don't have enough officers because we do have the right number of officers and we have the right trained officers. We have amazing officers that have moved here to Monument and moved and come to work for the town of Monument. We really appreciate their service to the town of Monument.
Okay, anything else related to this topic? I will say that I noticed that Tribe View increased the speed to 40 all the way through from Higbee to.
It's not up to Tribe View.
Yeah, it, those are.
Well, I can, I can give you history on that.
Okay, well, it went up to 40. Whoever did it, thank you, right? So that's it. It was 35, it's 40 all the way through from Baptist to Higbee now. And that will match all the way to 105 when the road work is complete, so.
Sometime in 2030.
Like, there's a corner to sit in. All right, we're going to move on to foresee investment strategy. Mona?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and hello, council members. We are excited to have Wells Fargo present you a new investment strategy. Our relationship manager, Rachel Brown, has been an amazing partner to us in the last year and a half I've been with the town. Rachel, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Rachel Brown. I'm the town's relationship manager at Wells Fargo. I, I've been with Wells Fargo for almost 21 years. And I've worked exclusively with government entities for the past seven years as well too. I'm part of a dedicated team that only works with government entities in the state of Colorado. So I'm just going to give you a high-level details about our Wells Fargo Government Money Market Sweep. So this is a fully liquid sweep that works with your operating account. The money transfers overnight. It's fully automated. It's 100, 100% treasury-backed money market fund. So it's only available to government entities. The money market seeks to preserve the value of the customer's investment at a dollar per share. It's currently at an interest rate of 5.25%. Uh, it is a variable interest rate, um, kind of moves with the market. Since this is a money market, is not FDIC insured or collateralized, but it is 100% treasury-backed security. So just to kind of give you an idea, the the town of Monument, we talked last week, has about $8.5 million that we could sweep. And that would give you $36,678 a month approximately at today's interest rate. So we'd like to help you earn more money so you can fix your roads and anything else you may need. So, um, any questions?
Anybody on the council have questions about this investment opportunity?
Counsel, I just want to thank Mona for working with, uh, Michelle and, uh, making sure that the town of Monument is able to pay their bills. This is something that this money sitting in a bank and earning less than 0%, some days I look at it, but it's earning less than 1% and we have the opportunity to earn up to 5.14%, I think. And, uh, it'll be fluctuating, but Mona's been doing a great job with our investment strategy and just want to thank her.
Thank you. I, I have a question and thank you, Mona. So it's, it's not FDIC insured and I see on the bottom of the screen says may lose value, which, you know, is always a, something I like to talk about. But you say it's treasury security-backed. So how does that on-off switch work for that so that it's never not treasury security-backed?
Yeah, that, that's money market fund is always 100% backed by US treasuries. So, um, you know, compared to some of our counterparts that offer other sweeps, we, um, we only have 100% treasuries for government entities.
So if Wells Fargo goes out of business tomorrow, then how would that work out for us, let's just say, is, because it's, it, I mean, I'm not saying the US government goes out of business, so.
Right.
Is that, is that about as safe as you can get that way or explain to me how that would work?
Yes, I mean, it's about as safe as, as you can get for a money market, um, since it's only US treasuries.
Okay.
So, and you can turn it off at any time, you know, if it starts to go down, the interest rate's not something that you want anymore. You change your mind, you can turn it off at any point.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
You're welcome.
Two, uh, couple of questions is, you said that the return for investment was six.
5.25%, that's today's rate.
Yes, I understand that, but you, you threw out, I thought I.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's $36,000 a month more than we're collecting today.
I got that. As you're saying, so how long is the money market fund, mutual fund? There, so there's no lock-in?
No lock-in. We just take whatever balance you have at the end of the day and invest it overnight.
And just to remind council, this is our operating fund, so we write checks every day.
And is, is this the moment, is this the only option or were there others?
Uh, these are the, I mean, it's the safest option we can look at. And this is since our operating account is with Wells Fargo, we figure we should reach out to them and see if they, um, will be willing to, um, present us with this opportunity. And we don't have to do anything, but then we're not going to win this interest rate of, and you have to keep in mind, the interest rate is going to go up and down depending on the market. So what's different about this investment opportunity than the, uh, certificate of deposit or CD? The funds are not stuck. We can take them out if, let's say we have a big expense, we have access to the money every day, just like we have now. But having them in a money market mutual fund, we can earn interest. With the CDs which we had, um, with, I mean, we have with the Piper Sandler, the money are stuck for six, nine, 12 and 15. And we're not alone. There are other government municipalities who are doing just the same thing as we're proposing. So the staff is highly recommending this option to earn some money.
So you're going back to your original, when you first started talking, your original statement was, this is the safest option. There isn't any comparable ones that are FDIC insured.
No, that, that is not. At this amount of money we're talking about, I'm not aware of anything FDIC. And even right now, we keep the money with Wells Fargo, which is not FDIC insured. So, but this money will be invested in a, in treasury bonds, so it's safe. You know, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen to the US economy tomorrow, uh, but I'm, you know, I don't know what to tell you more than that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just add one last thing that, um, you know, you can keep the funds in your operating account just as they are. We have another option where you can earn 1.75% and have them fully collateralized, you know, with the requirements of the state of Colorado. But, you know, this is another option that's fully automated, so. Welcome.
Mona, is the, is the goal to have, use the whole amount, the 8.5 in this money market? So we can start with 8.5 and depending on our needs, the balance may go up or down. Probably not up, but down perhaps, depending on, you know, how the expenses are coming in. But we're going to start, we're proposing to start with 8.5. Um, and then we'll see where the balance is going to go, but regardless of how much we're going to keep, we're going to, you know, have a, an investment revenue based on whatever balance we're going to keep and based on the interest rate for the month. So every day is going to be one interest rate, but then, um, for the month, they're going to send us the revenue, associated revenue in our bank account. Thank you, of course.
I've, I've questioned, so not FDIC insured, no bank guarantee, may lose value. We're talking about the town's operating funds without any protections whatsoever. More importantly, and I hate to bring this up, but Wells Fargo's been in the news a little bit in the last few years. You cannot guarantee what's going to happen to the taxpayers' money. You, you, what is the internal protections since you have been heavily penalized to the tunes of billions of dollars for violating federal government standards on money? So we have to make a decision on further allowing your bank to handle the taxpayers of Monument's money. What are your safeguards internally now since the federal government has fined the living daylights out of you? Right? What's the protections?
Good evening. My name is Brian Scott. I'm the managing director for our government banking team. So we have a, it's a national line of business. As Rachel mentioned earlier, we solely focus on government clients. I can tell you that it's a, appreciate your question. Certainly, you know, this is, I actually just had my 27th anniversary with Wells Fargo. And, um, the time period you're talking about, you know, um, certainly is disappointing, um, piece of, of our, um, history. You know, as far as where we are today, I can tell you, you know, you may recall the, the, the fines and the consent orders and all that stuff happened in 2016. Our CRA rating was, um, in terms of what Wells Fargo does in the community and what our CR, the CR rating, CRA rating was measuring, we have always been outstanding. It was reduced, um, based on the reputational issues that happened in 2016. In 2020, that CRA rating was fully restored to fully outstanding and has since remained there since then. I can tell you personally, you know, I've said I've been here for 27 years. The culture that I see that we have today is not commensurate with what happened back then. Um, our team, to specifically get to your question about safeguards, we do have on-bank solutions. So if you look at Wells Fargo, our Wells Fargo's rating, we're outstanding with CRA. Our financial rating is A+ with Fitch, with Stable Outlook, very strong capital. We just went through the stress test, which you may have seen a couple of months ago with all financial institutions went through. Um, we came out of that one, goes through a lot of different scenarios about what could happen in the economy and, and what would happen to a bank. They set a bank's capital ratios based on that. Wells Fargo came out in a very, very strong place. As far as the, the money market investment is invested in money market, so it, it can lose value. I mean, that, it's not 100%, you're not putting it in, in a bank into a CD as, as Mona mentioned. We have a, we have an account that, that works similarly to the money market sweep. Basically, it's going to cover the town's, um, banking fees first. It's going to put the money invested, um, basically the same way, but it stays on balance sheet versus being swept out into the money market funds. This one stay in Wells Fargo, basically. The return is lower, as Rachel said, today that's about 1.75. Um, it also is variable. It changes with, based on what's going on with interest rates in the market. But it is, um, fully collateralized as the operating funds are today. So there's always a return and risk and return trade-off, right? It's, it's basically the same thing. We want to make sure the town has the option for both scenarios. A lot of our clients are going into the sweep account today because the return is so much higher. But we do have this other option that's available that, um, you know, wouldn't have the, that, that would stay fully collateralized.
I, I still don't hear what the safeguards are. What are your internal safeguards to protect our money if we give you $8 million?
I'm not sure if I understand the question about safeguards.
Well, your, your, your bank had to pay $2 billion in 2022 to consumers and 1.7 billion in civil penalties based on what was found with the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau for mismanagement, including illegal, legal fees and illegal interest charges. What is the bank going to do to safeguard our money from your internal employees that perpetrated these issues that caused these fines?
Like I said, Mayor, I, one, I have not, I've not seen, um, that behavior. The town of Monument is part of our government banking team. Our team is 100% dedicated to government clients. Rachel is your relationship manager, sits right here in Colorado. We, we're banking the town today. Your funds are with us today. We're, we're taking care of your accounts, um, every day today. I don't, um, the issues that, that happened back in the, you know, 2012, 2013 with the, with the accounts, they were part of our consumer bank, department at the time or team at the time. And so I, I just, um, you know, I think if you look at, if I were, I understand your question. I would look at the, the strength of the financial institution you're at and that's where I go back to our, the credit rating we have is A+. You look at our CRA rating, we've just been through the whole OCC exam in 2020 and our rating was fully restored to outstanding. I mean, to me, that is the safeguards that you're looking for when you look at the strength of Wells Fargo. You look at our tier-one capital ratios today. We just went through the stress test two months ago. And when you look at the, at the tier-one capital that we have there, those are the safeguards. And when you look at the, at the tier-one capital that we have there, those are the safeguards you have in terms of having confidence in the, in the safety of your funds at Wells Fargo.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Just one last question, and it's for everyone listening online and will watch the video later on is, so you're telling us that potentially we're, the talent end up getting approximately thirty, could or may get thirty-six thousand dollars a month. But what does Wells Fargo get when, when giving or putting our, our money into this money market sweep fund? What does, what does Wells Fargo get out of it?
To be honest with you, we're taking care of, of you as a client. I mean, that's not, it's the town's money. We're, we're presenting solutions for you to, to earn more on, on that. Um, the money that remains in the bank, the way banks make money, you know, we have a, we would, a, a bank makes financial institution, every, any financial institution, you know, makes money by the funds that are sit remaining in the bank um every night. So all, all the, the depositors, all those funds that are standing in the bank, we make an amount of that, that's what we pay out in interest cost. Um, this, these funds are not being paid by us. It's investing, it's actually going outside of the bank. That's the reason you see the, it's not FDIC insured, because it's not staying in Wells Fargo. The money that's staying in Wells Fargo today, we are, yeah, we, we invest that, those funds overnight. Um, less, and then we, that's what we pay all the depositors on whether the CDs or, or um savings accounts or whatever.
Anybody else? Mr. Romanello.
Um, without making it a, a Wells Fargo or non-Wells Fargo thing, and I think that the terminology may be throwing people off. Um, money markets are about, you know, I mean, on a scale of one to ten of investment risk, they're a one. So as an advisor for thirty-five years, um, I can only remember one time in the economy when money markets had the potential to go below a dollar share and any institution would make them a dollar, make them whole, just to make them whole. I, I, there, there's really no risk here. Um, uh, uh, if, from a, from a real investment risk standpoint, I just want everybody to understand that. Uh, if you don't like an institution, you don't like an institution, that's one thing, but the, a lot of money markets use commercial paper and other things. And they're saying that on, on a municipal level, all you're doing is use, is using treasuries, that, right? So you're not even, not, yours doesn't even have commercial paper or anything else in it. So um, it would, and these rate, the only thing that, the only thing that's gonna change is the rate. I mean, I, just to be real, in, in, in reality, I mean, yeah, they have to post this and everything else, but in watching this for almost four decades, the only thing that's really gonna change is the rate. Uh, that'll fluctuate as they do, but I, I think it would be somewhat wise for the town to take advantage of these high rates right now because they're not gonna stay forever. Uh, and you know, i- if, if and when the Fed goes to a lowering point, they'll change quite rapidly. So um, it is an opportunity for the town to get some excess income coming.
And when those rates go back down, we can turn this off.
Right, we could turn off anytime and yeah. Right, and, and I mean, I, you know, I, I have clients in money market funds, they get a checkbook with it. They treat it like a bank account. It's not like it's anything that's locked up, tied up. She can move it back, right back into the normal, regular operating checking account with a phone call. So um, I just want everybody to understand the whole balance side of this thing.
Okay, um, there's not anything to vote on, but you are looking for direction?
Looking for direction, council.
Okay, so um, up to the council, if you wanna move in this direction with uh.
And Mayor, if I, if, I'm happy to give you a copy of our C R A, the, the most recent C R A rating point, if that would help in terms of your concern about.
Well, I, I would have to understand all the intricacies behind the banking industry, which I'm not prepared to dive into. When I say safeguards, I mean, internal processes that Wells Fargo put into place to ensure your employees aren't doing things that are illegal. You know, right? That's what I'm, I'm getting. And you didn't answer that question, so.
We have an entirely new um board of directors, new P E O, our, our incentive compensation plan that was in place at the time has been completely restructured so that it's not incenting that, that kind of behavior. So I would say those are the things that um, you know, our, our team is focused on relationships. And so we, we don't, there's no, there, there isn't any incentive for us to do something, you know, to a client because our, our whole, our whole focus is around relationships. Um, I say the biggest things are, we just have significantly, significant changes culturally, um, and from a leadership perspective, managers, the incentive compensation plan, like I said, all those are, are, are new in the last five years to take out that behavior.
Okay.
So and, and just to, to, to get back, so we, you know, you say it, this money goes off-site, but it goes into treasuries. And this is just an overnight account that it sits in the treasuries and then the next day it's back into.
It's a sweep account, so it's not being, it's not staying over there. It's a sweep means that it sweeps in, sweeps out overnight, sweeps back as, as um Mr. Foreman said, you know, whatever the townhouse bills, checks that clear, items that clear every day, those are, the money's there to, to cover those.
But the federal government is the custodian overnight. Is that how that works?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so um if the council wants to give direction to town staff uh to uh go along with this mutual fund option, is there?
Money market.
Money market. Well, it says money market mutual fund option. Sure, no, I get it. So is everybody in agreement with that? Or, or mostly in agreement?
Like, you're talking six months, a year, what, what, three months?
We should probably base it on what the market's doing.
Yeah, the, the, the Fed's gonna keep interest rates high probably all the way through twenty-four. I, I think you should let this go on, on her reporting back to us on a six-month basis. So that's, I think overmanaging it every three months is a little bit too much.
And if, and if the interest rate for some reason dropped, they'll turn it off.
Definitely.
Can I, uh, can I offer to present you with a report every month? When I send you the financial statement, would you like us to include a report? Just so you see how, how much we earn.
We'll show you every month how it's performing.
Will that be okay with the, the town council?
Uh, you're gonna out, no, I, I'm not okay with any of this, but it's gonna be what the rest of you.
I'm, I'm good with the monthly reports and doing it for, for a year or, or six months, whichever.
Right.
And also, if you like, we can send you the rates by day, so very granular information, or if you think that's too much, we can tell you how much.
Reports every day.
No, no, I'm not saying every day. I said, um, what, I'm, I apologize for, um, you know, um, not clarifying. What I'm saying in the monthly report, we can provide you um a daily interest rate and also the monthly revenue.
No, that's, that's entirely too much work.
Okay.
Just, if we're gonna do it monthly, which I still think is too often, then just the, the gross.
It's pretty easy to do because well, Wells Fargo's provides as a report, so we'll just integrate that into our monthly report.
That's fine. Okay. So you have your, it seems like the board is in agreement, the council's in agreement to move forward with this plan.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your trust in us. And just know, we will, soon as we think something's going wrong, we will turn it off and get with you. Okay?
Thank you.
And thank you, Wells Fargo, as well.
Okay, moving on, we have a public hearing for a liquor license um regarding a new fermented malt beverage and wine retailer, off-premises liquor license for QuickTrip. Not really sure, is this the, they're not open yet. So what, I, I'm curious as to why this is coming. Is this so that when they do open, that they're ready for their liquor license?
Yes, this will be so they can have their liquor all ready once the store does open.
Okay, do we have, are, are you doing this or is there, is there?
Pick me.
Okay, it's on you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I bring you a Colorado liquor license application for a new retail fermented malt beverage and wine off premises for QuickTrip Corporation doing business as QuickTrip number four-two-nine-nine. Liquor license at one-five-two-five West Baptist Road. The application was filed on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. On October fourth, twenty twenty-three, the notice of public hearing was published in the Tri, the Tri-Lakes Tribune. On October fifth, it was posted on the premise. There has not been within two years preceding the date of application, a denial of an application by either the State of Colorado or Liquor Licensing Authority for the Town of Monument for the same class licenses at the same location or within five hundred feet of the same location. Because the reasons, because the reasonable, reasonable requirements of the neighborhood and the desires of the inhabitants were satisfied by the existing outlets. From the event, from the evidence submitted, the applicant is entitled to position, to possession of the premises where the applicant proposes to exercise the license being applied for. The selling of alcohol from the premise in the manner proposed in the application is not in violation of the Town of Monument Municipal Code or other applicable laws, rules, or regulations of the Town of Monument County of El Paso or State of Colorado. All officers, directors, general, partners, and managing members with ownership of ten percent or more and the registered manager have been, have submitted individual history records and fingerprints for the conduct of background checks as required. An inspection of the premise will be conducted prior to the issuance of a license to confirm the diagram submitted is accurate. Here tonight is representatives for Quick, for QuickTrip, along with their attorney to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Um, is there any presentation going to be given by the applicant? Excellent, come on down.
Council members, Mayor, thank you for your time this evening. I'm Corey Tipton. I'm counsel for QuickTrip Corporation. My bar number is three-five-eight-six-five. And with me this evening are two representatives from QuickTrip to talk to you about the structure of the company and then to also give you some information on how the company operates with, with respect to liquor sales and um responsible vending laws in Colorado. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica first. She'll introduce herself and give you a little background on the company.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Glovis. I am a real estate project manager with QuickTrip. And I have been here a few times for Platts and such, so hopefully you remember me if you're here. Um, so just a brief background about QuickTrip. We were founded in Tulsa, Oklahoma in nineteen fifty-eight. We now have over a thousand stores. We own and operate every store, so we do not have any franchises. The uh purpose of our company is to provide opportunities for employees to grow and succeed. So basically, I mean, I started as a clerk when I was sixteen and now I'm here in the real estate department. Been with the company for twenty-one years, so um it's, it's pretty awesome. We also donate uh five percent of our net profits to the community where we operate. Um, let's see, what else? We're really big on security. Um, and then we are really looking forward to getting the store open. Um, I'll be here for questions. But I'm also going to turn it over to Adam to talk more about our operations.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name's Adam Ganger, and I started with QuickTrip similar to Jessica, just as a, as an overnight clerk. And that was, that'll be eighteen years uh in January. Um, I'm on the operations side. My position's a personnel manager. And um, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about our responsible retailing policy and just kind of how we handle uh the sale of alcohol and tobacco. So we train our employees from day one to start, your job with QuickTrip starts with an orientation class where you come to the office, we orient you to QuickTrip, talk about a history. And there's two major uh points of emphasis throughout this. Uh, one of them being customer service. And that's kind of the biggest aspect of, in being employed there, you have to be able to do a great job of being um customer friendly and um high standards there. And the other one's responsible retailing. So we cover this, we cover our policy in depth. We talk about scenarios and situations that they might encounter uh when running the POS, as well as uh educate them on local laws and state laws and um just make sure they're fully versed on how they can potentially make a mistake and make sure that doesn't happen. They then go through, for a part-time clerk, they would go through forty-six hours of training where this is covered in depth as well with a designated trainer with them the entire time. Uh, if they're an assistant manager, that, this would be a full-time position and their training would be anywhere from ninety-six hours to a hundred and forty-two hours. Same thing, trainers right there with them to cover anything that might be a challenging situation and make sure they're compliant. Um, when a product that's age-restricted is rung to the POS, there is a prompt that stops the sale and says, hey, this is, this is, you know, be alerted, this is a age-restricted product. They're then prompted to uh enter the date. There's also on the corner of that screen, there's the date that they have to be older than this date um to buy this product. So they can, once they ask for the I D, they can enter that data and, and now with the scanning function ability, they can scan that. Um, and when it comes to e-cigarettes, they all have to be scanned. So they won't even let them bypass that screen. Um, for just ongoing training, they do have two meetings with their manager. Uh, one, one a quarter with their manager and one a quarter with their supervisor, the area supervisor, where they're meeting with a group of their peers. And these, these policies are covered in depth. The supervisor would review and the store manager would review any compliance issues. Um, any type of uh just issues that we've had in general, you know. Um, making sure that our management team is also educating our clerk staff to make sure they have all the, they're updated and reminded regularly not to forget the compliance. We hire our own internal shoppers, uh mystery shoppers that come out, they will, they're of age, but they live young and they'll attempt to purchase alcohol and tobacco products. We perform these every quarter. So um, and we do, you know, measure those results and get out there, get in front of any compliance issues that we have. Um, on top of that, if there's an external sting failure, um, we will terminate the employment of that employee because of the extensive education and the, and just how significant this is, um, that we terminate. The uh, if it's an internal sting, we're not breaking the law, it'll be a written warning, which is the level of discipline up to just before termination. For the, one of the major focuses that we cover is that if the person doesn't look like they're fifty years old, you have to ask them for the I D, right? So we run them through scenarios. I'll ask them, hey, how old do you think I am? And, and then I'll follow up and say, well, would you card me? And so just helping them to educate that, um, that, that's a big gap. And there's a reason it's a big gap between twenty-one and fifty. You need to be asking for I Ds. Um, we trained them on how to handle a, a customer that's under, under the influence of, of marijuana or alcohol and take that product off the counter, put it down, and we refuse to sell. So um, we don't sell to anybody under the influence, uh, period. So we also educate them on the hours of sales, eight A M. to midnight. Um, when we shut it off for the, for the night at midnight, we have locks that we engage. And if somebody wanted to just open the cooler and take one, they can't because it's, it's a, it's a lock engaged into the housing of, of the door and the frame. So that is the, the highlights of our policy and turn over if you guys have any questions.
Well, I am gonna feel good about getting carded now because you have just said, you have just made me feel like I'm under fifty, so. Thanks. Thanks. Thank you. Um, any questions or comments related to uh? Wow, Ken. Any questions or comments for the applicant?
A question is, when do you anticipate the QuickTrip being opened? So then you have this license in place and the sales start?
Yeah, beginning of December, some of, November thirtieth.
Currently set for November thirtieth.
Okay, and just one quick question. This is just weird.
Okay, thank you.
Well, malt beverages, right?
Yeah.
Okay. As a, as opposed to hard liquor?
We also, also others, Mayor, the um third-party surveying company did the neighborhood needs and desires, which I have, Mr. Erickson said that we passed applying, so they got. we passed applying, so they got some of the required, but they are here to see if you have any specific questions with the requirements or how that is conducted. If not, that's fine.
Does anybody have any questions for the survey participants? Okay, this is a public hearing item, thank you for your presentation.
Very thorough.
Is there, is there anybody from the public in person that would like to speak for or against the issuing of the liquor license to QuickTrip? Okay, seen none, is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against this? Okay. Seeing that there's nobody who'd like to speak to this, we'll close the public hearing section, bring it back to the council for further comment or emotion.
I'll make a motion to approve the new fermented malt beverage and wine retailer off-premises liquor license for QuickTrip number forty-two ninety-nine located at one, five, two, five West Baptist Road.
Motion, we have a second, we have motion in a second, Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Mary LaKine?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Motion passes seven to zero, look forward to your opening. Welcome to, yeah, welcome to Monument. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is a public hearing ordinance. Just for the record, this will have to be read in its entirety, it's about eight pages long, this is considered the first reading and per state statute, we have to read it into the record, so. Mr. Foreman?
Yes, sir. Our attorney Bob Cole would like to make a statement, real quick.
If we can hear him.
Yeah, are you able to hear me at this time?
And hear him.
Okay, good, sorry about the earlier, earlier issues. Can't.
Can, can he call someone, put him on speakerphone?
Well, I can, I can potentially see the headsets that I'm hearing, I can take it as a microphone to hear.
How is this, is this any better? Are you, are you hearing me now? We'll, we'll hear him and then my mic. That any better, can you hear me now?
I, I.
Hi, Mike.
Put that back here.
Bob, what do you want to say? Kill it on this end. Can you move it to the middle? Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Sorry about that, I don't know what's going on.
What's going on?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain the process for this franchise ordinance, this is prescribed by state statutes. Requires a notice be published three times, three consecutive weeks prior to this introduction tonight. It's been done and your town clerk has a, has a copy of that certificate of publication to prove up that that notice has been provided. Process requires an introduction of the ordinance tonight and then subsequent consideration, voting on the ordinance. Your action tonight is to move this forward for consideration of vote at the November sixth meeting. In our briefing, we have a suggested motion to accomplish that. Unfortunately, the state statute requires that the ordinance both at tonight's meeting and at the November sixth meeting be read. And so I think you have to go through the painstaking process of reading all eight pages. Sorry for that, but that's what the statute says and so clients can do that. There'll be a notice published between this meeting and the, and the sixth meeting. Again, on this thing. A certification, application back to consideration. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Did the public get to understand what our attorney said about this? Essentially, the state statute requires a full reading of the ordinance in this particular case. It's, it's eight pages, this ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three is to grant Black Hills Colorado Gas, doing business as Black Hills Energy, its leases, successors and assigns a natural gas franchise and the authority to construct, operate, maintain and extend a natural gas distribution plant and system and granting the right to use the streets, alleys and other public places within the present or future corporate limits of the Town of Monument, Colorado. So this is a renewal of their existing franchise agreement, they come up. I'm not sure how many years, is this an annual? Or is this twenty years? So we won't have to do this again for another twenty years.
And, and we have to do it at the first reading and then the second reading for, at the approval in November sixth, and then we vote, okay?
Okay, so, Mr. Cole, I think we got this, there's no other questions, I'm going to pass the phone back to Mr. Foreman and we will begin reading of the ordinance.
And Mayor, this one lets you know online, can you, can you hear your speakers?
Okay, all right, well, I'm going to begin with page one and I'm going to pass these down, you can all take a page and they're, they're numbered. Be it ordained by the town council of the, of the Town of Monument, Colorado as follows, franchise granted the Town of Monument, Colorado here and after referred to as grantor hereby grants a non-exclusive franchise to Black Hills Colorado Gas, Inc., DBA Black Hills Energy. Here and after called grantee, its leases, leases, successors and assigns. Grantee is hereby granted the right, privilege, franchise, permission and authority to lay, construct, install, maintain, operate and extend in along, over or across the present and future streets, alleys, avenues, bridges, public rights of way and public easements as are now within the present or future limits of said grantor. A natural gas distribution system and all facilities necessary for the purpose of supplying natural gas or processed gas and other operations connected therewith or incident thereto for all purposes to the inhabitants of said grantor and consumers in the vicinity thereof and for the distribution of natural gas from or through said grantor to points beyond the limits thereof. Such facility shall include and not be limited to all mains, services, pipes, conduits and all other apparatus and appliances necessary or convenient for transporting, distributing and supplying natural gas for all purposes for which it may be used and to do all other things necessary and proper in providing natural gas service to the inhabitants of grantor and in carrying on such business. Term, this franchise shall take effect on the first day of the month following the date this ordinance is enacted by the town council of the Town of Monument, Colorado. The effective date, at which time grantee will begin to collect the franchise fee set forth herein and this franchise shall remain in effect for a period of twenty years from the effective date of this ordinance. Franchise fees or taxes. In exchange for the monument, the franchise granted herein, grantee shall collect from all customers but not from the Town of Monument, located within the corporate limits of grantor and pay to grantor an equal amount to three percent of gross receipts. Grantee derives from the sale, distribution or transportation of gas delivered within the present or future limits of grantor, the franchise fee. Gross receipts as used herein are revenues received from the sale, distribution or transportation of gas after adjustment for the net write-off of uncollectible accounts and corrections of bills thereto for rendered. The franchisee fee paid by grantee shall be in lieu of and grantee shall be exempt from all other fees, charges, taxes or assessments which the grantor may impose for the privilege of doing business within the present or future corporate limits of grantor including excise taxes, occupa- occupation taxes, licensing fees or right-of-way permit fees and in the event the
grantor imposes any such fee, charge, tax or assessment, the payment to be made by grantee in accordance with this section shall be reduced in an amount equal to any such fee, charge, tax or assessment imposed upon the grantee. Subject to applicable law, payment of the franchise fee does not exempt the grantee from any lawful taxation upon its property, from any tax or fee imposed for grantee's operation outside the use of the streets, from fees associated with development approvals associated with grantee's uses or facilities or from any other tax or fee not related to the franchise or the occupation or use of streets, subject to applicable law. Payment of the franchise fee does not exempt the grantee from payment of permit fees not covered by the scope of this ordinance, sales taxes, use taxes and any other fees or taxes assessed generally upon the businesses or does it exempt the grantee and its subcontractors and agents from obtaining land use approvals and permits as required by the Town of Monument Home Rule Charter and Municipal Code? Grantee shall report and pay any amount payable under this ordinance on a quarterly basis. Such payment shall be made no more than thirty days following the close of the period for which the payment is due. Initial and final, final payments shall be prorated for the portions of the periods at the beginning and end of the franchise granted by the Town of Monument, Colorado to grantee. Grantee shall list the franchise fee collected from customers as a separate item on bills for utility service issued to its customers. If at any time the Colorado Public Utilities Commission or any authority having proper jurisdiction prohibits such recovery, then grantee will no longer be obligated to collect and pay the franchise fee. Any customer refunds ordered by the commission or any authority due to an unlawful or prohibited collection of the franchise fee collected by grantee and remitted to the grantor shall be refunded by grantor. Within ten days of the date of this ordinance, grantor shall provide grantee with a map of its corporate limits, the map. The map shall be sufficient detail to assist grantee in determining whether their customers reside within grantor's corporate limits. The map along the grantee's geographic information system or GIS mapping information shall serve as the basis for determining grantee's obligations hereunder to collect and pay the franchise fee from customers. Provided however, that if the grantor's corporate limits are changed by annexation or otherwise, it shall be grantor's sole responsibility to update the map so that the changes are included therein and provide the updated map to the grantee. Grantee's obligations to collect and pay franchise fee from customers within an annexed area shall not commence until the later or latter of sixty days after grantee's receipt from the grantor of an updated map including the annexed area or after grantee's receipt from the grantor of an updated map including the annexed area as is reasonably necessary for grantee to identify the customers in the annexed area obligated to pay the franchise fee. Provided further that neither party shall have the obligation to correct the mistake including but not limited to collection of the fee by grantee from its customers or remittance of that fee by grantee to grantor that is discovered more than one year after occurrence thereof. Grantor shall indemnify grantee from claims of any nature, including attorney fees arising out of or related to the imposition and collection of the franchise fee. In addition, grantee shall not be liable for paying franchise fee from or to any customer originally or subsequently identified or incorrectly identified by grantor.
Or by grantee. As being subject to the franchise fee or being subject to a different level of franchise fees or being exempt from the imposition of franchise fees. Grantor shall have access to and the right to examine during, during normal business hours such of grantee's books, receipts, files, records and documents as necessary to verify the accuracy of payments due hereunder. If it is determined that a mistake was made in the payment of any franchise fee required hereunder, the mistake shall be promptly corrected upon discovery such that any underpayment by grantee shall be paid within thirty days of recalculation of the amount due and any overpayment by grantee shall be deducted from the next payment of such franchise fee due by grantee to grantor. The grantor reserves the right to renegotiate the franchise fee a maximum of two times during year three through ten following the effective date and a maximum of two times during years thirteen through twenty following the effective date. The grantor must provide writing or written notice to grantee of its intent to renegotiate the franchise fee no later than one hundred twenty days prior to the applicable anniversary of the effective date. The party shall negotiate in good faith and no later than thirty days prior to the applicable anniversary of the effective date. The grantor and grantee shall jointly establish a new franchise fee determined to be reasonable to replace the franchise fee then in effect. The new franchise fee shall become effective upon the anniversary of the effective date that immediately follows the year in which the grantor exercises its right under this section. Once the grantor and grantee have renegotiated a new franchise fee, the grantor may not exercise its right to renegotiate the franchise fee earlier than the third year following the year the franchise fee was renegotiated. Unless and until the franchise fee is replaced pursuant to the section, the then current franchise fee shall remain in full force and effect. The franchise granted hereunder is subject to all conditions, limitations and immunities now provided for or as hereafter amended and applicable to the operations of public utility by state, federal law. The rates to be charged by grantee for service within the present or future corporate limits of grantor and the rules and regulations regarding the character, quality and standards of service to be furnished by grantee shall be under the jurisdiction and control of such regulatory body or bodies as may from time to time be vested by law with authority and jurisdiction over the rates, regulations and quality and standards of service to be supplied by grantee. Provided however, should any judicial, regulatory or legislative body have proper jurisdiction take any actions that precludes grantee from recovering from its customers any cost associated with services provided hereunder. Then grantee and grantor shall renegotiate the terms of this ordinance in accordance with the action taken. In determining the rights and duties of the grantee, the terms of any this ordinance shall take precedence over any conflicting terms or requirements contained in any other ordinance enacted by the grantor. If an energy supplier is unable to furnish an adequate supply of energy due to an emergency, an order or decision of the public regulatory body or other acts beyond the control of the grantee, then the grantee shall have the right and authority to adopt reasonable rules and regulations limiting.
Curtailing or allocating extensions of service or supply of energy to any customers or prospective customers and withholding the supply of energy to new customers, provided that such rules and regulations shall be uniform as applied to each class of customers or prospective customers and shall be nondiscriminatory as between communities receiving service from the grantee. Any pavements, sidewalks or curbing taken up and any and all excavations made shall be done subject to the approval of grantor in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Monument Municipal Code in such a manner as to cause only such inconvenience to the inhabitants of grantor and the general public as is reasonably necessary. And repairs and replacements shall be made promptly by grantee at grantee's sole cost and expense leaving such properties in as good a, as condition as existed immediately prior to excavation. Grantee agrees that for the term of this franchise, it shall maintain and operate its facilities and equipment one in a condition sufficient to meet the current and future energy requirements of grantor, its inhabitants and industries, two, in accordance with applicable state statutes as revised from time to time, three, in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Colorado Public Utilities Commission and four, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the Town of Monument Home Rule Charter and Municipal Code as they may be revised from time to time. While maintaining its facilities and, and equipment, grantee shall obtain permits as required by the Town of grantee shall obtain permits as required by the Town of Monument Municipal Municipal Code and will fix its excavations within a commercially reasonable time period, except that in emergency situations, grantee shall take such immediate unilateral actions as it determines are necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. In which case, grantee shall notify grantor as soon as reasonably possible. Within a reasonable time thereafter, grantee shall shall request and grantor shall issue within its reasonable discretion any permits or authorizations required by grantor for the actions conducted by grantee during the emergency situation. Grantor will give grantee reasonable notice, excuse me, of plans for street improvements where paving or resurfacing of a permanent nature is involved that affects grantee's facilities. The notice shall contain the nature and character of the improvements, the rights of way upon which the improvements are to be made, the extent of the of the improvements, and the time when the grantor will start the work, and if more than one right of way is involved, the order in which the work is to proceed. The notice shall be given to the grantee as soon as practical in advance of the actual commencement of the work, considering reasonable working conditions to permit the grantee to make any additions, alterations, or repairs to its facilities. Upon receipt and acceptance of a valid application for service, grantee shall, subject to its own economic feasibility criteria as approved by the Colorado Public Utilities Commission, make reasonable extensions of its distribution facilities to serve customers located within the current or future corporate limits of grantor. If grantor elects to change the grade of or otherwise alter any street, alley, avenue, bridge, public right-of-way or public place for public purpose, unless otherwise reimbursed by federal, state, or
Local Legislative Act or governmental agency, grantee upon reasonable notice from grantor shall remove and relocate its facilities or equipment situated in the public rights of way at the cost and expense of the grantee if such removal is necessary to prevent interference. If grantor orders or requests grantee to relocate its facilities or equipment for the primary benefit of a commercial or private project or as result of an initial request of commercial or private developer or other non-public entity, and such removal is necessary to prevent interference, then grantee shall receive payment for the cost of such relocation as a precondition to relocating its facilities or equipment. Grantor shall consider reasonable alternatives in designing its public works projects and exercising its authority under this section so as to not arbitrarily cause grantee unreasonable additional expense. If alternative public right-of-way space is available, grantor shall also provide a reasonable alternative location for grantee's facilities. Grantor shall give grantee written notice of an order or request to vacate a public right-of-way, provided, however, that its receipt of such notice shall not deprive grantee its right to operate and maintain its existing facilities in such a public right-of-way until it A, if applicable, receives the reasonable cost of relocating the same, and B, obtains a reasonable public right-of-way dedicated utility easement or private easement alternative location for such facilities. Upon termination of this ordinance and franchise granted hereunder, if the grantee shall not have acquired an extension or renewal thereof and accepted the same, grantee may have and is hereby granted the right to either A, abandon any or all of its facilities in place, or B, remove any or all of its facilities at any time after the grantor has that ample time and opportunity to purchase, condemn, or replace them. Any removal of grantee's facilities shall be subject to any and all requirements of the Town of Monument Municipal Code, including but not limited to Section one-two-point-three-six-point-zero-one-zero thereof. In so removing said facilities, the grantee shall at its own expense and in workmanlike manner refill any excavations that shall be made by it after the removal of its facilities and repair all surfaces to the condition prior to such removal. The grantor's rights and privilege of purchasing the grantee's system and facilities subject to this franchise shall be governed by the laws of the state of Colorado. Grantee acknowledges that the grantor is subject to the Colorado Open Records Act two-four-seven-two-two-oh-one CRS, Cora, and all records in grantee's possession are potentially subject to public disclosure. Grantor acknowledges that certain information it might request from grantee pursuant to this ordinance may be a proprietary and confidential nature, and that such request may be subject to the Homeland Security Act or other confidentiality protections under state and federal law. Grantee agrees to label and mark any information provided to grantor and desires to keep confidential as proprietary or confidential as applicable. If grantee requests that any information provided by grantee to grantor be kept confidential due to its proprietary or commercial value, grantor and its employees, agents, and representatives shall maintain the confidentiality of such information to the extent allowed by Cora and other applicable law. If grantor is requested or required under Cora or by legal or administrative process to disclose any
Such proprietary or confidential information. Grantor shall promptly notify grantee of such request or requirement so that grantee may seek an appropriate protective order of or other relief, force majeure. It should not be a breach or default under this ordinance if either party fails to perform its obligations hereunder due to force majeure. Force majeure shall include but not be limited to the following: one, physical events such as acts of God, landslides, lightning, earthquakes, fires, freezing, storms, floods, washouts, explosions, other than those caused by the acts or emissions of the grantee or its agents, employees, or contractors, breakage or accident, or necessity of repairs to machinery, equipment, or distribution or transmission lines. Two, acts of others such as strikes, workforce stoppages, riots, sabotage, insurrections, or wars. Three, governmental actions such as necessity for compliance with any court order other than court orders specific to and issued as a result of acts or emissions of the grantee or its agents, employees, or contractors, law, statute, ordinance, executive order or regulation. Executive order or regulation promulgated by a governmental authority having jurisdiction and four any other causes, whether the kind herein enumerated or otherwise not reasonably within the control of the affected party to prevent or overcome. With regard to item number three of this section, grantee shall Grantee shall still be required to perform its obligations hereunder as long as such obligations are not prohibited by such governmental action. Each party should make reasonable efforts to avoid force majeure and to resolve such event as promptly as reasonably possible once it occurs in order to resume performance of its obligations hereunder. Provided, however, that this provision shall not obligate a party to settle any labor strike. Hold harmless guarantee grantee, excuse me, grantee during the term of this ordinance agrees to indemnify, save, hold harmless, and defend grantor from and against all claims, demands, losses, and expenses arising directly out of the negligence of grantee, its employees, or agents in constructing, operating, and maintaining its distribution and transmission facilities or equipment, provided, however, that grantee need not indemnify, save, hold harmless, or defend grantor from claims, demands, losses, and expenses arising out of the negligence of grantor, its employees, or agents. Successors and assigns. The grantor may not assign the franchise agreement as granted hereunder without first obtaining the written consent of the grantor. All rights, privileges, and authority granted to grantee hereunder shall inure to do the benefit of grantee's leases, successors, and assigns subject to the terms, provisions, and conditions herein contained, and all obligations imposed under grantee hereunder shall be binding under grantee's leases, successors, and assigns. No third-party beneficiaries. This ordinance constitutes a franchise agreement between the grantor and grantee. No provision of this ordinance shall inure to the benefit of any third party, including the public at large, so as to constitute any such party as a third-party beneficiary of the agreement or of anyone or more of the items hereof or otherwise give rise to any clause cause of action for any person not a party heretofore. Severability. If any clause, sentence, or section of this ordinance is deemed invalid by any judicial, regulatory, or legislative body having proper jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected.
Non-waiver. Any waiver of any obligation or default under this ordinance shall not be construed as a waiver of any future defaults whether of like or a different character. Repeal conflicting ordinances. This ordinance, when accepted by grantee as provided below, shall constitute the entire agreement between the grantor and the grantee relating to the franchise granted by grantor hereunder, and the same shall supersede all prior Town of Monument ordinances granting grantee a franchise. And any terms and conditions of such prior Town of Monument ordinances granting grantee a franchise or parts thereof and conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Ordinance, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-two of the Town of Monument Colorado is hereby repealed as the, as of the effective date hereof. Effect and interpretation of ordinance. The captions that precede each section of this ordinance are for convenience and or reference only and shall not be taken into consideration in the interpretation of any of the provisions of this ordinance. Acceptance. Upon final passage and approval of this ordinance by grantor in accordance with applicable laws and regulations, grantee shall file its acceptance by written instrument within sixty days of passage by Board of Trustees with a clerk of the Town of Monument Colorado. The clerk of the Town of Monument Colorado shall sign and affix the community seal to acknowledge receipt of such acceptance and return one copy to grantee. If grantee does not, within sixty days following passage of this ordinance, either express in writing its objections to any terms or provisions contained therein, or reject this ordinance in its entirety, grantee shall be deemed to have accepted this ordinance and all of its terms and conditions. Introduced, read, and ordered published by the Town Council of Town of Monument Colorado upon a motion duly made, seconded, and passed at its regular meeting held at the Town of Monument on the sixteenth day of October, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. The remaining page in this ordinance is the affidavit of publication, which shows that it was published with who? Ms. Erickson. Tri-Lakes Tribune. And one other place I can't, Tri-Lakes Tribune, okay. That is the first reading of the ordinance, and we will move on.
Good news for you, Mayor. I just confirmed with Bob that since we did go home roll, the next time we have to do a charter, not this time, you could pass an ordinance that would relieve us from having to read the entire body of of this, so.
Thanks, Bob.
I will get, I will get an ordinance to you.
We could have used yesterday.
Yes, yes. Bob let me know that about five minutes ago, so I will, I will get you an ordinance, sir.
The board twenty years from now thanks you.
Okay, this, this is a public hearing item. Yeah, yeah, so that does mean that the public is able to speak to this. So I'm sure you all digested that and have and have memorized it. So for those online, we're going to try something a little different. We've got a USB speaker set up to a team session up here. I will keep the mic muted and allow the volume on the speakers to go when we get to those who have their hands up. Is there anybody in in the meeting hall here who would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I will raise the volume here, and I saw someone named Tom. Is that, was that correct, Will?
Yes.
Okay, well, you.
I'm going to allow my credit. Tom, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me now? Okay, there's a double mute. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Henley with Black Hills Energy, fifteen-fifteen Arapahoe Streets, Denver, Colorado. Thank you very much for enduring that reading of the of the ordinance and the franchise agreement. Having worked at Excel Energy, I can say you're lucky that you didn't have to read theirs. It's thirty-some pages. So thank you again for doing that. We appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you and continue our partnership with Monument. We have been, obviously, your provider for a number of years, and we have deep roots within the community, as myself being a member on the Chamber of the Board of Directors, as well as supporting various different events that we have at the Fourth of July to the annual Chamber Dinner, as well as the Tri-Lakes Food Bank. We are very much ingrained within Monument, so we appreciate your consideration. For those of you who are in the general listening public, basically what this franchise does is allow us the opportunity to work at the town's behest and work within their guidelines to provide natural gas service to both residential and business customers within the area. And again, I thank you very much for your due, your due consideration, and we hope that you'll vote to approve the the ordinance.
Okay, is there, thank you, Mr. Henley. Is there anybody else online that has a public comment that they would like to make? Okay, seeing none. We do not have to vote on this now. We will vote on this at the next reading. And so, Mr. Cole, we can, we can move on, correct?
Are you able to hear me?
Unmute, unmute yourself, Mr. Cole.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes.
Fine. So we do need, we do need the motion that's in our brief. We would need that to be made. It's not an approval of the ordinance. It just approves moving the ordinance to your second consideration.
Okay, I move to approve the ordinance to move to the second reading or second vote. I don't understand exactly what the second consideration.
So I second.
If I could interject, the recommended motion is on the last page of and that's on page seventy-eight, I believe, of your packet.
I move that the Town Council continue that's very annoying, the public hearing and consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance granting Black Hills Colorado Gas Incorporated doing business as Black Hills Energy, its leases, successors, and assigns a natural gas franchise and the authority to construct, operate, maintain, and extend a natural gas distribution plant and system and granting the right to use the streets, alleys, and other public places within the present or future corporate limits of the Town of Monument Colorado to the November sixth, twenty-twenty-three Town Council meeting, and public such an ordinance in accordance with Section thirty-one dash thirty-two dash one-oh-three CRS.
I second.
We have a motion in a second, Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Furyto.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple.
Yes.
Mayor Lekine.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Rom. Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to the first resolution sixty-three dash twenty-two-three, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Monument Hill Kiwanis Club and the Monument Community Presbyterian Church for the Heart of Monument Play Park Project. Ms. Vanenhove.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. You might remember back in February, we made a presentation about the opportunity for a new playground to be built in the downtown of Monument. The Monument Community Presbyterian Church is donating approximately a little under a half acre to us for us to build a, a park on, and the Monument Hill Kiwanis Club are looking to be partners in that process, primarily as a fundraiser, fundraising organization. This memorandum of understanding is a, was written by our town attorney and has been agreed to by both the governing bodies of the Monument Hill Kiwanis Club and the Monument, our Monument Community Presbyterian Church to outline the responsibilities from each of these organizations. In an overall summary of the responsibilities, the town will be primarily responsible for managing and facilitating the design and construction related to the park, and coordinating any public bonds or public financing mechanisms that might be needed for this park. The Monument Hill Kiwanis Club will primarily be responsible for fundraising operations related to the design and the construction of the park, and the Monument Community Presbyterian Church intends to donate to the town approximately one-half acre of land to be used for this park project. There are members of the church and the Monument Hill Kiwanis in the audience, and as well as myself, we'd be happy to answer any questions about this memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions for Ms. Vanenhove or any of our guests that have come here to discuss this resolution? Okay, then I will look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution number sixty-three dash twenty, twenty-two-three of resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Monument Hill Kiwanis Club and the Monument Community Presbyterian Church for the Heart of Monument Play Park Project.
I second.
We have a motion and two seconds. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Lakine.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes seven to zero. Okay, resolutions sixty-four dash twenty-two-three, a resolution approving a contract with NES for the design of the Heart of Monument Play Park. Ms. Vanenhove.
Good evening again. This, this contract also relates to the Heart of Monument Park. The committee that was created with the Kiwanis, the town, to review proposals that were sent out through an RFP process, we reviewed the proposals as a committee, and we invited two firms to come and make presentations to us in person. After the presentations and the proposals were all evaluated, we looked at their approach and innovation to the project, their community engagement process, which will be very important because we have to use grants in order to fund this project, their, their experience with working within, with, with, and with other municipalities, and also with, working with grants, and then also their proposed costs. After the committee still reviewed those proposals on, based on that, those requirements, we have chosen the firm NES to complete the design and manage the construction of the Heart of Monument Park. In addition to what was provided to you in your packets, I've also handed out tonight our matrix that has kind of our scoring for all of the firms that solicited proposals. The funding for this portion of the project will be the responsibility of the Kiwanis per the MOU that you just passed, and to date, the, the Kiwanis have already raised about thirty-five thousand of the funds that would be needed for this project. Again, members of the Kiwanis are available in the audience that served on that committee, as well as Katie Frank, the project manager from NES that will work on this project, are also in the audience, and myself, we'd be happy to answer any questions about this contract.
Okay. Will there be a presentation by NES?
Not tonight, no. The presentation is included in your board packet.
Okay, then I'm sure there are questions, so who would like to start?
I will be happy to start.
Okay.
Are there any changes to this contract, Madeline, since we spoke about it?
Yes, we have asked the firm if they would make some changes to section four point two about the additional, let me get the right verbiage here for you.
Reimbursable.
Reimbursable fees, and the firm has agreed to take that back to their firm and, and see if they can change those to where they will be only if asked for and approved by the Town of Monument, instead of just automatically included. And then also, a big important piece is on the supplemental services and the budget, it now says total not to exceed the forty-seven thousand.
Thank you.
So for just clarification, that they're estimating forty-seven thousand as the total cost, or?
Total cost for the design and construction administration, once we choose a playground vendor.
Okay, and then on your Excel sheet, which I appreciate, it says grants, what grants are available, or?
So we're still researching what grants are available, but we have a professional fundraiser who is a member of the Kiwanis, who is helping us with this, but we'll be looking at grants from the Colorado Lottery, from health foundations, there's a number of different, AARP might be a possible funding source for us, as well as individual foundations such as the Daniels Fund, Al Pamar Foundation, there, there's a plethora, we have a big spreadsheet of funding opportunities.
And then what, if anyone from the Kiwanis, I'm a huge fan of, they played baseball in Little League when I was a kid for the team, and my father was the coach, so I always got frozen on his team no matter what. What type of fundraisers are you looking at doing?
Good evening, I'm Scott Ross, President of the Monument Hill Kiwanis Club, also the project lead for Heart of Monument Play Park. And we have two types of fundraising, one that Madeline mentioned is major grants, those are five thousand dollars and more, that'll be roughly eighty-five percent of the four-hundred-plus-thousand dollars that we will raise, and we have a much higher target, we know it's a batting average, and we've already submitted over three hundred thousand dollars worth of grants just in the last month and a half that we should hear about before the end of the year. The other fifteen percent is what we call fundraising, it's all the smaller things that we are doing, and we're finding that the community is stepping forward with this. AB Telles and Rosie's Diner found out about it and said, that's who we want our annual car show to support, and so we got over two thousand dollars from them because they saw it and they liked it. Just yesterday, we had a fundraising event at Evergood Adventure Wines in Palmer Lake, where we had fifty-eight people attend, and we raised over eighteen hundred dollars. So we're doing a lot of those kinds of things. We had a successful fundraiser at Perry's Pizza one night, we've got Texas Roadhouse, Pies and Grinders, we have a lot of those kinds of Spirit Night kinds of things, and that should raise roughly fifteen percent of our target.
Any other questions? All right, I have a couple. Okie dokie. So, Madeline, who's on the hook for this contract to NES?
So the contract is with the Town of Monument, so we are signing the contract. However, per the memorandum of understanding, the financial fundraising responsibility would come from the Kiwanis, which is why we had to have the memorandum of understanding. So it looks like the town would be on the hook for it, however, we already have the commitment from the Kiwanis through the MOU to do the fundraising part, portion for this park.
So, but if they can't raise that money, then that is a responsibility of the Town of Monument, is that what I'm hearing?
That would be true, however, they've already raised thirty-five thousand to date, so they're already in good shape for, to cover the majority of this contract.
Okay, I'm having a little bit of difficulty wrapping my head around forty-seven thousand dollars to a design of park. It seems like there should be easier, less expensive ways to do it, and but that's a conversation probably for a different time. But what I do, prob- I'm just going to just say what I have some issues with for the, the whole NES part of this. And, and what I have issues with primarily is with resident and, and community relationships. Typically, in the past, we haven't had that great of an experience when it comes to them with the community, being compassionate and, and listening to, to the community, and we get a lot of feedback about how they just kind of get walked over, and that may be one or two people within the company, I don't know, but it doesn't seem like a value based on past experience, and I'm concerned about that because one of the things it, it talks about in here is it could be contentious to have a park, I don't think it's contentious to have a park, but it could be contentious because it's forty-seven thousand dollars, and it could be contentious because that, those meetings don't go so well. So I'm concerned about that part of it, how do we address that? And maybe that's somebody from NES that probably needs to come up here.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, and thank you, Council. My name is Katie Frank, I don't know if you can, if that's on or not, and I am the project manager with NES, and you know, just, I guess, I'll give you a little bit of background. For me, my past twenty years' experience is, is actually in nonprofits and local governments and development, with an emphasis on downtown revitalization and development. So this, this is what I do, this is my passion, I live in Monument, I can walk downtown and raising my kids here throughout school. So you know, I, it's interesting, I, I love the honesty and the candidness because I think, in my opinion, that's how you get things done, and, and that's just something that I value and that I bring to all projects that I, that I work on. To me, a, a project is, is something that is driven by the community, how I have always approached any project in any community that I've worked in is, you know, what, what do the people want? So I mean, it's easy to come in there and say, this is, this is a great design, this looks pretty, this is perfect, but is it what the residents want? Is it what they're going to use? Is it, is it what is needed? So that's, that's just the way I would approach it, this as a project manager. I don't know if you have any other questions for me, or any, I could go on and on and on, but you know, what, you know, what other things are concerning to you? I mean, what, what are your thoughts, or do you have any other questions?
Are you, are you going to be the one that's going to lead the interaction between the residents?
Yes, it will be myself and Chris Lieber, and Chris Lieber is a principal at NES. Again, I, I, most of the projects that I'm working on currently at NES, they are a hundred percent community-driven, so I don't know if you've heard of the Outdoor Pike's Peak Initiative, for instance, that's, that's all about gathering three counties' worth of community engagement, and that's a project that I'm working on, and working on, we actually just having a meeting tomorrow with the Carrot School of the Deaf and Blind to build their playground, so that's another project that I'm working on. So those, that's the area of NES that I, that I work on. I could keep listing projects, but I won't, I won't, I won't give you that unless you want it.
No, not currently.
Okay.
And full disclosure, Katie's my next-door neighbor, so.
I know, that's.
I haven't talked to her about this.
No.
But she might be related to Dr. Frank with Pomeroy.
I might, might know him, yeah.
Right.
And his children.
So just a, just a question to confirm, this, this will be an ADA compliant park for all ages?
Yes, all ages, all.
Abilities.
Abilities, yes, yep, which we were talking earlier, actually, it'll be interesting going through the deaf and blind school process, because again, obviously, that's, that's all abilities, you know, obviously, it has to be, so we'll, we will literally be going through that same process, and I'll have that in our back pocket for this project also.
Any other questions? Yeah, but you can sit down, Katie.
Thank you.
If he wants to follow up. Oh, sure. Yeah, can I ask a couple of questions for Madeline first? So, Madeline, on your score system that you have over here, this, this scoring mechanism was done by who?
So there were several members of the stakeholder committee that were participants that read through the proposals and were also in attendance for the presentations. So this was, this was actually a, a matrix that I used for another project that I just sort of rebuilt in order to reevaluate these proposals with some feedback from the stakeholders committee.
Okay, so between the first two, the only significant difference that I see in here is on grants and funding, so where does that, how does that come into play?
Well, it was, they really didn't have any experience with grants and funding, so that was going to be left entirely up to us, and so one of the things that NES brings to the table is they do have experience trying, working with municipalities and getting grant funding, so we felt like that was a better score for them, whereas the other firm did not have any experience, nor were they really willing to help us in that realm.
Okay, is NES going to help on this, or is this up to the Kiwanis to?
NES has already come up with some ideas for grants, and they will help us also with some of the language that we might use in our grant applications as well.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment. Anybody else have any comments? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Just to follow up on two things, we talked about community engagement, that's something that the Kiwanis Club has been working on since last February, when we started doing what we call a fact-finding organization. We have gone out and talked to elementary school kids, we've talked to Jackson Creek Senior Living, we've talked to the D thirty-eight Disabled Students Parents Organization, we've gone to twenty-four groups, we're still, next month, we talked to the Monument Warrior Special Olympics groups, and we're asking, what is it that you want in this playground? And also, what is it that you don't want in this playground? This is not the same surveying that NES is going to be doing, they have their own process to formally survey the community, and that's an important part of that fundraising, but we want to find out, and we had kids that wanted all kinds of things, and we learned all kinds of stuff that I can talk about at length at another time, but it really has shaped what we think we want to see in this playground. And to respond to Councilmember Kempel's comment, this is more than ADA compliant. ADA is a federal statute, statute, and it talks about how you get to the pieces of equipment and access to parking and those things. What we're working towards is what's called universally accessible playground, and that means not just that the five-year-old in a wheelchair and my ninety-seven-year-old father-in-law with his rolator can get to this, but the equipment is designed such that they can get on it, they can play, they can participate, and that's a whole level beyond just what ADA does, and it's what really makes it accessible for all people, the whole family can get together and play, and I've experienced this with my own granddaughter and father-in-law down at Panorama Park in the southeast corner of Colorado Springs, so where you really can get people to play, there not one member of the family left outside the fence, so I think it's important that you know that, thank you.
Okay, so before you sit down, so how, what, what is your, your feeling on these design fees and the role that NES is going to take in this?
They're critical. From the beginning, we said we want what's called a design-build relationship, so working with them and then with them and with playground vendors, which we will select, we will work to get both the landscape architecture and the playground architecture right, so that it meets the needs of all those people that we've been visiting with, and it's a substantial amount of money. The current budget is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's a substantial amount of money. The current budget is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Depending on how we raise it, it might be a little less of a playground, it might be a little better playground, depending how the money goes. But we're fully confident that we will have a high-quality playground by the time we're done. Not sure if I fully answered your question, Steve.
Well, you're, you're the one raising the money and it, and you know, again, I'll just reiterate that it seems to me like it's a lot of money for the design for the playground and.
Oh, the forty-seven thousand dollar part?
Right.
We looked at that, and the alternative was that we or the town do it ourselves. And we don't have that experience. These folks do. They build these things regularly. Were they um absolutely convinced us by the examples that they have and the work that they are doing now that they can make this the best playground that it can be in terms of funding? Yeah, as of yesterday, uh, we have raised over forty-two thousand dollars of that. We spent a little bit on tri-fold folders and banners and things like that. But um, it's ready to be spent. When the town requests it of the Qantas Club, we will approve it and return it to the town to then issue the check. Now, N E S is not charging this all at once. They have, I think it's a six or seven-phase process. So they'll complete the first phase, they will invoice us that portion, and then on through it. So um, we are highly confident that we will get the whole four hundred-plus thousand dollars raised and that we already have enough in the bank to move this project well down the path.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Question, I have a question for you.
Yes.
The construction of the playground equipment, will that be done by the manufacturer? Or are you gonna be asking for community help because my back still hurts from the Trinity?
Thank you. Yeah, that's actually good. And and actually, it's a very good thing. There's something called a community bill.
My, my back doesn't hurt.
And depending on the playground vendor, that becomes a possibility. The group that Trinity Community Park used, that is something they offer. And we would love to see that, but that's just one of the factors that's involved. And for those that haven't heard, their engineers, they'll drill the holes in the right places, they'll fill, they make sure the posts and everything connects correctly. And then as many people as we can get in, get to turn a ratchet or haul a piece over so that everybody gets to say they had a part in building this playground. So um, community builds a wonderful thing. It's not an absolutely requirement, depending on the playground vendor that we pick. Um, but I think it's a sure nice thing to do.
Well, Mayor Lakind and I have done this with Trinity already, so we have experience.
And we talked.
Oh, and Ken too. Sorry. And Ken too.
Unfortunately, that Saturday was the day I got installed as president of the Qantas Club, so I couldn't be there to help. But Cameron and the crew at Trinity, uh, we talk with them regularly. We support each other. We believe that this is all good for the community, so.
Well, you got three volunteers sitting right here.
Excellent.
My back will be better by then.
We'll give you an easier job.
There was plenty, there were plenty of people standing around. Wasn't me, though.
Excellent, thank you guys. Yes, ma'am.
I have one more question. Um, and this is just kind of a, a general. When you talk about a community park, and this is my vision, I see volunteers and volunteering and people um offering services and product to help, you know, promote this kind of thing. I mean, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is is a lot of money, period, end of the story. I- is there any way that, that, the like, the playground equipment people, the, you know, whoever else is involved in this could get involved in a voluntary kind of way so that the, the burden of the dollars isn't as much as it sounds like at this point?
Yeah, and we are not at that point within it, but finding sponsorship, whether it's a pavement company that might do some of that. And local businesses that might be able to contribute in meaningful ways, absolutely.
Okay.
We have been working hard at this for fifteen months now, since this came back onto our radar. And tonight is when we really make this all official. So a lot happens now, thanks to what you folks just voted on and what we hope you'll vote on here in a moment. But absolutely, with those kind of in-kind donations, um, we're already tracking a lot of those. But those are, I'll call them more modest in-kind donations up to this point, but that's all part of it.
Yeah, and that helps with grant funding too, when you've got a lot of in-kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Was there any other questions, comments, concerns from the council? Okay, then uh I will look for a, if there's no further discussion, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-two-three. Resolution approving a contract with N E S for the design of Heart of Monument Play Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Protem King.
With, with the caveat that this is paid for by fundraising, I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes, with the caveat that in fact, the N T E is included in the contract.
Councilmember Furi To.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple.
Yes.
Mayor Lakind.
Uh, yeah, same caveat, that the contract comes back. I will not sign it until it has the corrections added to it, but yes.
Councilmember Abbott. Yes. Councilmember Romina.
Yes.
All right, the motion passes seven-zero with conditions that the contract comes back to our liking. All right, we'll move on to Resolution sixty-five dash twenty-two-three. Resolution opposing Proposition H H, an undue limitation on municipal budgets and local control of property tax relief. Uh, this one belongs to me. So as part of uh my role at Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments as well as uh in communicating with um our House District Rep. Don Wilson. And as you all know, it's gonna be on the ballot that's been, been mailed out to you probably today. The state legislature has put on a proposition uh called H H and I I. I don't remember exactly what I I is, but I think it's got something to do with the funds they're gonna, how they're gonna spend it. But H H is basically uh the state governments um looking to circumvent the rules of, and the law of Taber, taxpayer bill of rights. This is uh just this, this resolution is basically the, the council saying to the state government that we do not agree with this ballot initiative, the way it will impact the taxes within the Town of Monument um and our recommendation to um residents, which we're allowed to do. We have freedom of speech for that, to, to recommend, to not uh tell our residents to not vote yes for H H to vote no. I know there's been some, some concerns about this from the council members. It's come through uh discussions with our attorney. Uh, so we'll open it up for discussion uh before we move forward with a, a motion on this one.
Yeah, as I originally started this morning, or the, the, this evening, um, it's been a long day. I, you know, I understand, I understand the pros and cons about propositions in H H. What I'm more worried about is, I don't really think, number one, that there's any teeth to this that we push this through. It's not gonna change anything. But what I, what I don't like is that the perception and what you just said, Mayor, was that it telling the, telling the residents the recommendation to vote no. And what I worry about that is, we've gotten into a little situation in the past when there was a misunderstanding about saying yes or no on placards and signs and everything else. And I'm worried about this, someone coming back and raising it again. And then we're gonna get into a whole bunch of bureaucratic and potentially legal loopholes. Um, that's gonna tie us up. And I firmly believe that the, the residents of Monument, and if they wanna know how I'm gonna vote, I, if they ask me, I have no problem telling them how I'm gonna vote on anything. I, I'm not hiding that fact. However, I, I, in my humble opinion, I believe that this is setting us up for potential failure by saying, here's our recommendation. Once again, when the residents receive that blue book to read, they can research on their own, and they have their own opinion to decide to vote yes or no without us telling them to do that, because I don't want it to come back to it, to this council once again, saying that we are. I, I don't wanna use the word force, but we are pushing for this direction. I don't think that that's our responsibility on this council to do.
I agree.
Okay, well, and I'll, and I'll also side with that. I mean, I've been very vocal online that personally I'm against H H and um I would not like to see it pass. But we, we were on, we were on that meeting with um, I guess it was C M L. And there was some um questions in there, whether or not that this was something that would be considered a town recommendation or if it was considered a individual recommendation. And I don't know if we ever got any legal opinion back from that, and I know we've got Mr. Cole online, and maybe he can address that.
Well, I can say that I've not heard back any legal opinion because there was no legal counsel in the P P A C G meeting. The uh, before I raise the speaker for Mr. Cole, so we can hear him speak. The resolution uh came from C M L, and their whole, C M L's whole purpose to exist is to take care of the municipalities. And we pay them for, to validate that what these resolutions say are not going to get us in trouble. So um.
Do we know what other municipalities or towns or anybody else taking these steps? Cause I don't recall us doing this before, and I don't recall back then the Board of Trustees doing this.
Well, uh, Representative Wilson told me just two nights ago, maybe it was last night, I don't remember. But it was within the last forty-eight hours that the previous boards did, in fact, make recommendations on state measures. So um I will raise the speaker for Mr. Cole, so he can speak. Just give me one second.
So I, I appreciate the concern and, and uh, and fully understand that. More decision, I, I greatly appreciate the desire to make sure we're in compliance and we don't have any missteps here. The, the law allows, and this is really a Fair Campaign Practices Act issue. The Fair Campaign Practices Act does not allow you to spend public funds to campaign for or against a measure. It does have a couple of exceptions. One exception is it does allow you to adopt a resolution. Again, supporting or opposing a measure that's before the electorate. And then you can disseminate that resolution in the same manner that you would disse- uh disseminate similar other resolutions. So if you don't disseminate your other resolutions, you can adopt this, but you can't disseminate over. If dissemination is simply being published on your website uh with a copy of your minutes, then, then that's what, what you could do. If you make a regular practice of, of battering your resolutions on your website or sending out mailers, you could do that. But you can't, you can't go out and uh change how you provide information just to get this resolution out there. Beyond that, you, you have uh ability to spend any public funds for or against a measure. Whether you choose to, to adopt a resolution like this, it's totally up to you and your discretion. You just have to be careful what you do with it afterwards so that we're not spending any funds. Uh, I'll, I'll tell you that I do have some clients that are adopting this, this resolution in a very similar format. I have other clients that, that um believe it's really not their role and, and they are going the other way. So um, I think you'll see, I think you'll see other municipalities adopting it. But, but certainly, it's not gonna be uniform and other forms of local government that are being impacted. They'll be doing some of the same. Now, one thing I would add is sometimes the value of these resolutions aren't in the fact that you disseminate them, but then they're used by uh, by the groups that have a similar position in their, in their campaign efforts. And you can't control that. That's up to them, and it's up to them to comply with the law. Expenditures. But when you see, when you see on a lot of those campaigns, twenty-three municipalities in the front range support this or oppose this, those kinds of statements. What they're doing is they're canvassing, uh, you know, the adoptions like this and representing it in their campaign materials. So it can have some value, it can be disseminated, but you, you would be very limited in the public funds you spend to do that. You'd answer any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Is there any other questions that they, you may have for Mr. Cole, or you want to discuss?
I, I was gonna, so from a devil's advocate standpoint, we're not telling people how to vote. The way I'm reading it, we're saying, we're listing how H H could negatively affect the town. So to me, those are factual statements, potentially, right? Um, and then we strongly urge a, a no vote, but we're not, we're not telling people how to vote, we're just urging folks to, to vote no. I mean, to be devil's advocate, um, I don't know, I mean, uh. Yeah, it can be.
To be the other devil's advocate, is it even worth it?
That's a good question. I, I think that, that maybe that, that, that's probably the, the better question to ask is, is the Town of Monument's um name worth, as, as Mr. Cole mentioned, other entities are gonna use potentially, are gonna use our, our resolution uh for their purposes. So I think that is a better question um to ask, I think. Is not so much the resolution itself, but the second and third order effects. Um, and again, i- is it worth it? I, I haven't seen any polling whatsoever. Um, I, I try to avoid that stuff. But um, but I think that would be a, a good discussion to have. I, I don't know that, personally, I don't know that this would have a sway either way for me um in how I vote. So I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels on how essentially the town's name could be used in, in this resolution.
If I may make another statement, we're supposed to be apolitical. That's how we get, you know, we don't have to declare a party to be here. So if we're apolitical, my view is, let's be. Don't go there.
Okay. Like that.
Um, any other comments or questions? Okay, well, um, I will still look for a motion, or it could be a motion for something other than voting on the resolution. Okay, if there's no motion, then the resolution dies. All right, so we will move on to public comment. So before we get to public comment, I just want to um state for the record that uh. uh, probably about an hour ago, I was texting between, uh, Mr. Foreman and Will to try to figure out a solution to our, um, communicated, communication problems that we're experiencing in, uh, Town Hall tonight. We have this speaker here, um, that is connected to a laptop, which has the team session running. So as you've already seen, I'm going to, um, unmute the speaker, so to speak, when we get to those that are online. And I, if you just bear with me on that, uh, we'll, we'll get to everybody who would like to speak. But, um, so public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Uh, please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Uh, comments will be limited to three minutes. Um, is there anybody in Town Hall that would like to speak?
Oh.
Okay. And if you could, um, sign the sheet and state your name, uh, when you are ready to speak. Fifty pens.
Good evening, um, Mayor and Councilmembers. Can you hear me okay? I don't even know if this is on. My name is Hillary Brendemull and I'm a taxpayer in D38 School District and a member of the Monument Citizens for the First Amendment. I'm here this evening to give you the letters between our attorney Andrew Nussbaum and Bob Cole to be entered into the public record. With that, I thank you for your time and attention to this very important matter. Thank you.
Terry Hayes with the TriLakes Chamber of Commerce. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know, if you haven't seen already, on Wednesday, we have a community expo. It is going to be at the TriLakes YMCA from four until seven o'clock. And we have over 80 vendors that are going to be there and of all different kinds. It's a great way to get started on some Christmas shopping, maybe find some new services. It's free to attend. And also we're going to have a ton of giveaways. So our, a lot of our vendors give giveaways and you do not have to be a present to win. So that's the best thing. You can show up, see a few vendors, get your name down, and then you'll be entered into the drawing. And it also happens to be Chamber, National Chamber Appreciation Day on the 18th. So we would appreciate it if you guys would attend. Thank you.
Oh, hey, Terry, Terry, Terry.
Okay. Yes.
The, you're saying over 70 vendors, are they all?
Over 80 vendors.
Over 80 vendors, are they TriLakes or is it Monument or is it?
It's all of the above. It is all of the above.
Okay.
Yeah, we take over their entire gym and then also the space next to it.
At the YMCA, you said?
At the YMCA.
What was that time again? I'm sorry.
Four to seven on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Is that it?
I'll see you there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
What, Wednesday, right?
Wednesday. Two days from now.
Okay, is there? Is there anybody else in Town Hall that would like to speak? Well, you're the last one. Okay, is there anybody online who would like to make a comment? Okay, then we will close public comment. Do not believe, does anybody have any council authorization items? No, okay, uh, we'll move on to council comments. Anybody have any council comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, just wondering the status of the, uh, water study slash research slash funding that we're looking for, like when that's going to come in? On the?
NDS versus?
Yeah, and yeah.
NDS versus loop, we're bringing that to the first meeting in December.
December?
Yep, we put that, we continue that to the first meeting in December.
Okay, um, how does that affect Mr. McGrady's? Have we reached out to him to say?
He was at that meeting when we made that, when the council made that decision.
Okay. And then, um, lastly, just as a reminder, um, I will not be in town. One through 10 November, I'll be out of town. I have to attend a memorial service slash ceremony. So when that, I will be, I will be online. Hopefully the, uh, network will be fixed, so I can participate.
You said one through 10?
One through 10 November, I will be, I will be out of state. But I'll be online for the meeting.
Got you.
On the third. Yes. Uh, yeah, the sixth, the sixth. And it is the sixth.
Just as a point of clarification, just a reminder for some, um, no second meeting in November.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to know. Okay, any other, okay, so it's been noted that Councilmember Kimpel will be gone November 1 through 10. Is there any other council member comments? Okay, I've got one. Um, I will be out, uh, November 14th through the 22nd. I'll be back on the 23rd. And the other thing to talk about is the cancellation of the December 19th meeting. Just to give, um, we need to give board direction to, uh, the town to cancel that meeting so they can publish it. Is there anybody opposed to canceling the second meeting in November? December? That, it would be, it'd be December 19th.
I have, we, I have a question about it though, because if we're going to cancel the second, is it, wasn't the second meeting our backup? Cause we have to make some budget decisions?
So the budget would be the first meeting in December. If you didn't, then you could have a special meeting in between December and December 19th, or you could have the meeting on December 19th.
Or could we not decide to cancel the 19th meeting until the sixth, until we have that?
The fifth?
Or the fifth? So, to make sure that we vote on the, but so that we have all the budget stuff done in case, so we don't have to go through the rigmarole of now we got to pick another day for a special session.
The problem with that is it would prevent staff from being able to secure vacations and travel if they were at that short of a notice.
But are, are we?
We're not obligated to have two meetings a month.
I know, but wouldn't we be doing that if we, for some, I'm just saying for some reason that we put ourselves up against the back of the wall on, on the first meeting in December? We can't decide on a budget or we need more information. We're discussing things now, we have to pick a special session, which now people have already picked vacation days.
And, okay, so you're saying let's not cancel that meeting until we?
Sorry, I was wrong, I was looking at the wrong day. 19th? December, uh, it would be, the December 4th is the first meeting. We'll be canceling December 18th. Could we not do a bunch of budget stuff on November 6th? So that on December 4th, we can vote?
We can do whatever you would like. We can have a budget workshop before?
During the meeting, so it won't be a, a workshop.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm, I'm not, not worried about, um, what I'm worried about is that we're, we're putting ourselves up, we're putting our backs up against the wall that if, if we can't determine the budget and we need that, now we're going to have to have us, if we cancel the second session, then we hold the first session. We can't determine things or we need more information on a budget. Now we're going to have to call a special session. And we're going to have to round robin everyone to see what their days available are because staff, you know, because of the vacation and stuff. That's what I, I'd, I'd rather get the budget stuff out of the way in November. That way December's freed up for all, all intents and purposes.
Right, so in my, this would be my fourth budget season? And you're fifth or sixth? We've never not gotten it done to what you're concerned about. I, I know the concern is real, but I would, I would rather us finish it in November, vote on it in the first meeting in December and then, and cancel the meeting now. We've got plenty of time to un-cancel it if necessary. They're not going to publish it until they're required to. But I, I am very confident in the staff's ability to get us a budget that we will be able to have plenty of time to review and ask questions and ask for modifications. Especially the November, the first meeting, I, we, we have to have the wish list if not before, so we can start reviewing it. There's no reason why we can't see the wish list ahead of time and look at our reserve number, because that's important. And, uh, salaries, I mean, the, the big things that we need to focus on, get it to us as soon as you possibly can. And allow the emails to get funneled through you with concerns, changes, modifications, so that that first meeting in December is a vote to approve the budget and we don't have to worry about the second meeting. I've never seen us have to have a special meeting for the budget and I, I'll be very disappointed if we have to do that.
I agree.
Yeah, look, we can go ahead.
Okay, any other council comments?
So let me, let me make sure I got right direction here. Budget presentation in November, first meeting in November, we're going to have budget presentation for you. You're going to give us a lot of comments, we're going to get everything out to you, uh, ahead of that. And then, um, vote on the budget on December 4th.
Correct.
Good.
There'll be no other meetings after that.
Mr. Mayor?
I know, I wanted, I have to do the speaker thing.
No, he just came through. It's fixed.
In the meeting, the voice is fixed.
It's magic. Go ahead, Cole.
Just wanted to point out that if HH passes, I had to talk to your staff, so I'm not sure what they're thinking. But I just want to learn, and if HH passes, you won't get your final assessed values on, on your property tax, to be able to know what that revenue amount would be. That, those numbers won't come out, where normally they're finalized by December 10th. That deadline, if HH passes, is going to slip to, uh, December 29th. And then, uh, your deadline for certifying property taxes slips from December 15th to January 5th. I point this out again because I'm not sure what strategy Mona and Mike have been thinking about, but, uh, I would just, just put in your minds, you may end up having to have a special meeting between December 29th and January 5th to finalize your budget based on revised numbers that come out at the very last minute if HH passes.
So.
Mona's very happy right now.
Yeah.
She, she's thrilled.
Mona has banged her head into the table. We need a new table.
What's the election date? November 6th? And what's our, that's the same night as our?
November 6th.
No.
The day before.
So you, wait, hang on.
November 6th is our budget.
Election day is November 7th. So you're, so I understand, Mr. Cole, you're saying that with all the date slippages, because we have to submit a budget before the end of the year or before the 5th, is your, 5th of January, you're saying?
So, so the, the way the calendar works right now is you get a final assessed value on, on your property taxes to calculate your property tax revenue. You're, you get that, um, on December 10th and then you're supposed to finalize your budget no later than December 15th and certify your bill level. Now you've got your preliminary assessed value and many, many entities work off of that and adopt their budgets before those deadlines. But if HH passes, because the assessed valuations will change, your property tax revenue amounts will change. And if you want that precise, uh, you won't know what those numbers are potentially until as late as, uh, December 29th. And if that requires an adjustment to your budget, maybe I don't know how. Sorry to raise this without having spoken to Boda or Mike about strategizing it, but that, that could result in changes to your revenue amounts that require adjustments to your budget. Finalizing that and then that window changes. To currently, you have to have that done by December 15th, but that window could change to December 29th to January 5th.
Is there a process where you can put amendments or demends into the budget?
We do.
We can restate the budget after it's passed.
We actually have, um, 2023 will be amended budget in, um, November 6th. So every year we do amend the budget, so yes, we can do. And usually we decided to do it at the year end, just so we get all the changes into the amended budget.
But we can restate the budget anytime.
I'm sorry.
We can restate the budget.
Yes.
So then if these dates cause us, due to the, whether it passes or fails, causing us to have to restate it, we can still restate it sometime in January or February.
Yes.
Thanks, Rob.
We restated it.
Thanks for, thanks for all that mess.
We restated it at the end of the year, like Mona said, so that we could roll that over into the new budget. So the chapter.
Okay. Right, we can still probably do it and I'm confident that this is going to fail, but anyway.
Yeah, I had to say that.
Yep. Hey, knocking on wood.
For the, the, the loop versus NDS, we're doing November, December, the final decision.
We're getting the?
Okay.
Okay. Right, we're getting information from the loop that they did not have for us before. Okay, any other?
One last, one last suggestion. Do we cancel the first meeting in December and make a special meeting at the end of the week after the results and the findings are done? To do the budget?
We, we would, we, we would just leave the meeting. It wouldn't be a, I don't think it'd be a special, we would just reschedule the meetings, right?
It's a special, it's a special.
We do need to have a meeting in early December because we need to approve the mill levy. It has to be filed with the state by the 15th.
Okay, how about you provide recommendations at the next meeting to us on what we should do in December based on the November vote? Or what you expect, what our options are?
Okay.
Okay?
Can do that.
All right.
So no cancellation of the meeting now? On December 18th?
18th. As of right now, no cancellation. Okay, no more council comments. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.